I call to order the work session, no, this is not the work session. The business meeting, sorry, yeah. The business meeting of Beaverton School Board on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five at seven oh one P M. All six board members are present in person and one board member online, so all seven are present. Does anybody have a request to change to the agenda? Uh, Dr. Carpenter?
Um, I would like to pull the turf field from the consent agenda.
Anybody else? So do you want to make a motion or, or, no, we can, we can move forward to with the agenda without the turf. Agenda item and. So we will start with the student performance and recognitions. So we have Stoller Middle School Choir.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having us. This piece is called Evening Rise.
Oh, I forgot to take a picture. Back to your spot, sorry about that. Thank you. Is, uh, where's the picture going? Facing that? Oh, facing the fans. Uh, so now we can turn around, take a step back, guys, take a step back.
All the way deep. Oh, we use it in.
Great job, guys, great job.
Okay. D S D?
D S D.
Thank you. Let's head on out, fires. Thank you, parents.
Thank you, that was great. Next up, we have a recognition of, we would like to congratulate. Uh, Whitford Middle School Seventh Grade Counselor Nikki Throer. Who has been recognized with the educator award from the Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators. Ms. Throer is known for her relationship-centered, strength-based approach. She is a fierce advocate for student voice and belonging, and she proudly co-leads her school's black student union. Although Nikki is unable to join us this evening, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize and congratulate her. Next up, we have Regional Teacher of the Year and State finalist, Jason. Will you please make your way to the presenter's table? Congratulations to Jason Galbert. Computer Science and Engineering Teacher at Sunset High School. For being named the Northwest Regional Teacher of the Year and finalist for the twenty twenty five, twenty six Oregon Teacher of the Year. As a regional teacher of the year, Mr. Galbert. Uh, received a one thousand dollar award and was advanced as a finalist for the Oregon Teacher of the Year. Well done, Jason. Can you please tell the board more about the courses you teach and the unique solution that you have for making them accessible to more students? Thanks.
All right, thank you, school board, for recognizing this. So I wanted to kind of talk about my teaching philosophy, which is the core of how this award came to be. So I very much believe that my goal as a teacher is to try and. Make it so that every student that comes through my classroom is more prepared for life beyond high school. By being in my courses, so. That means that I am constantly differentiating for every single student in my classroom. It means that I'm kind of anti-standard, which I know isn't. Something that is the same as many of my district colleagues, but you have contrary people in every district. So the way that it works is that I have all of my classes built such that they can all learn online. Anything that used to be a lecture-like thing is then put on as videos, as tutorials, walkthroughs. And then I spend my time working with individuals within the class. Uh, there's no homework required, everything's done in class. And so it allows me to really teach to all sorts of different strengths. And everybody can learn at the same time. That means I'm teaching ten different classes, all at the same time, all in the same period, for every period. It's a little crazy. But the kids really appreciate it. That's the reason that I got nominated by a couple of my students. So for this award, I had to like write resumes and get letters of recommendation. And now that I'm saying it out loud, I think that this was actually payback for assignments. But they were really able to actually learn exactly what they needed to, when they needed to learn it, at the level that was appropriate to them. And like I had kids that were really shy, wouldn't speak up in class, that wanted, when it came time for letters of recommendation. To help endorse and like that's the big award is, that's the reason that like I teach all these crazy classes. So the reason that I have class sizes of like fifty to sixty, year after year after year. It's why like I throw out like traditional teaching techniques out the window whenever like it doesn't suit the needs of my students. Because making sure that they're able to achieve is really what I'm after, so, thank you.
Next, we'll have the comments by the superintendent, Dr. Balderes.
So, thank you, and I want to welcome our student reps for being here from our, from four of our twelve high schools. So welcome to your first meeting and I look, we all look forward to your student voice. So thank you for being here. I was on a recent call with the Department of Education where they say that there were. There's a mention of them being asked to create contingencies for reductions from the governor's office. So that caused a little bit stir with state superintendents. And I do fear, fear that there will be additional reductions possibly coming even maybe this year that we don't know yet. Again, those contingency plans are being brought forward to the governor's office later on this year. And in early spring to the electives in Salem. So we do have a November nineteenth forecast, budget forecast as a state. So keep an eye on it and see where we, we are. I do also believe what I'm here is the next long session. Maybe a difficult, a difficult one for Oregon and definitely a difficult, a difficult one for public education. So also just want to talk about homeland security activity in the area. To ensure that people are aware that we train our staff for any possible engagement with any law enforcement. Including homeland security. And we have just much like we did in twenty seventeen. We are doing it again in twenty twenty five. And I want to thank staff for the work, Shelley, for your leadership in this area. But also just make sure that our schools are the safest places for our kids. And we're working together as county superintendents to ensure that we're proactive together. So just want to relay those words because I think there's some concern out there. So beyond that, just thank you for tonight and again, thank you, students, for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Balderes. Next, we have comments by employee groups. Katie Lukens from B E A.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members and Superintendent. It's hard to believe we are almost a quarter of the way through the school year. Across the district, students and educators are working together to build strong learning environments. And classrooms are filled with curiosity, collaboration and care, which reflects the hard work happening in our schools every day. On the agenda today, we're fortunate to hear from Beaverton Education, Beaverton Education Foundation. Who we are lucky to have as a partner and I am lucky to serve on their board as in my role as B E A. B E F helps us fund programs and resources that support our students and educators. We are lucky to have them, but we should also keep working towards a future where B E F's role is an added bonus and not a necessity. Our schools should be fully funded so that every student has what they need without having to rely on outside fundraising to fill the gaps. I also want to speak about the board's operating agreements on your agenda, which say that school site visits are arranged only by the superintendent. While we understand the need for coordination, our members believe that open and honest communication is vital. Educators and our community members have elected you to govern our schools. And that responsibility includes seeing our classrooms firsthand, not only carefully curated experiences. We hope you will continue to accept invitations from union members to visit schools and engage directly with those who teach and support students every day. On Friday, we heard that the Trump administration again undercut the authority of the U S Department of Education. This time gutting the office responsible for overseeing special education. This reduction in force affects dozens of staff who manage roughly fifteen billion dollars in special education funding. And ensure states provide services to the seven point five million children with disabilities. This is the only department authorized to allocate I D E A funding. According to multiple reports, nearly all staff in the Office of Special Education and Rehabilitative Services were cut. Leaving only a handful of top officials in support staff. This office guides families, monitors state compliance and protects the rights of students under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. As one source said, this move is decimating the office responsible for safeguarding the rights of infants, toddlers, children and youth with disabilities. A core value of a free and public education for all. This decision is alarming. Federal oversight helps guarantee that students with disabilities receive the services they are entitled to under law. Oregon receives a hundred and forty nine million dollars from the federal government in special education funds. Educators in Beaverton will continue to advocate for all students and ensure support and inclusion in every classroom. We should all be contacting our congressional representatives and senators to demand that they take action as this is a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the O S C A president, Kirsty Sakman.
Good evening, Chair Garg, Superintendent Dr. Balderes, members of the board. Hello, my name is Kirsty Sakman. I am a para educator in special education deemed as a para three rover. And I am the O S C A president-elect. I would like to always say thank you, Katie, and our B E A colleagues for their wisdom and their words. And thank you for speaking up in solidarity for all of our members as well as specifically in the announcement from. Federal administration around the change of special education. I, as a personal employee in special education who lives, breathes and speaks passionately for special education. I struggle to not always monopolize my O S C A time by speaking out for special ed. So thank you, Katie, and members of B A for speaking out on that. As we as O S C A will continue to work for that, but we do represent a hundred and forty two plus classified positions. I will not take up everyone's time with my special ed passionate concerns. With that being said about the positions I represent, I will always stand strong and say thank you. To all the dedicated workers and classified work. Our schools, our students, our educators, our colleagues, our administrative professionals. And our admin and executive administration could not do what they do for Beaverton School District without the dedicated work. Of every single classified position. I, at this table, struggle to always make sure that I make sure every classified position is valued and heard and called out. But I want to say that we all know whether you said it to enough, which I know no classified has ever heard it enough. You are the reason our kids are able to be at school. I'm not even going to name positions because everyone in classified positions makes sure that our students. Have access to come to school to be educated by our dedicated B E A colleagues. So thank you and thank you for all you've done this far into the year and all the things you plan to do. Throughout the anxiety that is the federal administration and the changes to public education that could be coming. I'm going to run it back to something a little more positive. With something that we as O S C A have fought from the state level down is for continued recognition, recognition of classified employees. The first week of March of every school year is Classified Employees Week, something we call in one of those silly acronyms, C E W. I would like to give a giant shout out to a para three out of our ACE program, Anya Janik. For coming up with the winning idea for our statewide Classified Employees Week theme. Which is Classified Employees Pave Pathways to Student Success. Simple yet beautiful. Thank you, Anya, for taking some time out of your dedicated work to support some of our most impacted students out of our ACE program. To remind ourselves and remind our district and remind people around the state, the dedicated work that staff do by creating a very fun. And detailed and simple way to call out the dedicated work that classified staff do. In another win, I do want to shout out our public safety team. I want to shout out that this year our. Public safety team has brought to our district new walkie-talkies. I know some people are going to have a sigh of, oh, struggle, because we've had some struggles with something new. Something new that is impactful and important. Also, there is barriers and jumps and issues that we're continuing to work through. But I do want to say a giant thank you to public safety for continuing to troubleshoot our new walkie-talkies. But continuing to be dedicated to the reality of the safety of every single person on one of our B S D campuses. I've talked to public safety through and through enough times to know that we all put student safety first. But public safety has continued time and time again to recognize the reality of safety of all of our staff. That are supporting our students. And I would like to say a shout out, I know these, these walkie-talkies have been complicated in some of our buildings and there's been a lot of work by people like Fred. Who've had to come out and troubleshoot. I can tell you personally, as a para three rover, I have been almost a mile off campus. Scared and worried about a safety of a student due to the needs of their I E P. And that's all I need to share for that. But being worried and being scared and being frantic of my student's safety as well as my own personal safety. This walkie-talkie was my lifeline. Past walkie-talkies meant well, but they were mumbled, jumbled, no matter who was speaking. But I felt safe. I felt within my reach to communicate with the building, communicate with people that might have more information on where my student was. And we were, as a team, were able to locate that student safely and stay communicate. In communication as a team to keep that student safe as well as all of our staff safe. And I want to give a giant, giant shout out to public safety for all the work they continue to do to make sure this new group of walkies. Is doing our best to keep everybody safe. do to make sure this new group of walkies is doing our best to keep everybody safe. So thank you. This is a silly one, but a... I need to run that back. This seems silly because I feel like I talk about this day in and day out, but this is an important fact to members. One of our biggest wins in our contract negotiations this year was the idea around vacations, the access to use our vacation days as mostly 260-day employees. I'm going to put some numbers out there because it feels important to me and feels important to put on record. Vacation hours for employees who do earn vacation, hours from our '24 and '25 school year are able and eligible to be used through June 30th of 2026. The hours will not be wiped in the usual past practice of a December end of this school year wipe of hours. That will not happen. Your hours will still be available until June 30th of 2026. The hours that many of you were front-loaded at the beginning of this school year for '25, '26 will still be eligible until June of 2027. If you have questions, please, 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 please talk to your supervisor, your department heads, your admin, and if that doesn't give you the answers you need, please don't hesitate to reach out to the union. I know for some people around this room, this feels sillier, not necessary, but this is something that continues to affect our members and the dedication to their employment and the work they do to earn these hours. So I felt it was important to put on public record so that if you are a staff member in a building who feels like someone is worried about their vacation hours, please help them with that information. I would like to say thank you to everyone in our hiring process, whether it is within our specific department hirings or our dedicated HR hiring team. Something, a major win, I can tell you, is that we are in the best, I'm a knock on all the woods, the best staffing hiring that we've had in mid to late October that we've had in my time as a president, and one of the best we've had since before COVID numbers for a lot of our classified positions who are known to have high turnover rates. Specifically, an example I always give, special education, paraeducators. Usually, in this time of year, we trend at 30, 40-plus open positions. Currently, again, knocking on wood, we're in under 20 open positions in paraeducators and special ed, which is a milestone and a wonderful win. I will also say in custodial maintenance and our transportation bus drivers, there are also numbers that are usually particularly high this time of year, and they have been lowered. And I know that is very much due to the people that are working in the hiring process, the changes our district has made, the dedication to looking for qualified members, as well as restricting barriers to different staff and different people that can apply for our jobs that have the willingness and the ability to do the hard work with maybe some barriers in education or access to education. And I really appreciate that work and the focus on hiring quality members that have growth and opportunities in our district. I appreciate everyone's work and time to support classified staff. I will continue to support. Please join our chapter meetings, the third Tuesday of every month. Please come sign in on Zoom, be a member, whether you're an active dues-paying member or a dedicated classified staff who isn't able to pay dues, that's okay. We work hard for our students and the people's business. Please come and reach out to all the support needs, positive, negative, or otherwise. And if you're a leader supervisor, please support them in supporting and coming to chapter meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsty. It is now the time to hear comments from our community. As a reminder, this is a time when members of the public can comment to the board, and the board will be actively listening but will not be responding or answering any questions. We appreciate you being here today. The board welcomes public comments, virtually or in person, from up to 10 people who sign up before the meeting. When more than 10 people request to speak, priority is given to students, district resident speakers, who have not already provided public comment during a recent meeting, and the variety of topics. Comments can also be submitted in writing. We received 10 requests to provide public comment tonight in person. The 10 speakers will be Natalia, Pirum Ova, Marcus Berger, Abishai, Mikhaya, Ben, and then Nick, who will ask to give their full names when they speak, Jenny Mackey, Jessica Pierce, Lizzie Russell, David Reins, and Matthew Seidman. Only the people I named are allowed to speak. Each speaker will have up to two minutes to share your thoughts. Your time cannot be shared or given to another person. We have a timer on the screen. When your two minutes are up, you must stop speaking and make way for the next person. Your microphone will be turned off if you go over. The school board does not hear complaints or charges against individuals. You may not name a staff member, board member, or committee member in your testimony. Personnel matters and complaints should be resolved by communicating directly with the employee, their supervisor, or through the district complaint process found on our website. Please be aware, you must not use the names of staff members or board members when you speak. Your testimony will be ended if you identify a staff member, board member, or committee member by name. Our first speaker is Natalia. Natalia, please come up to the front table and please take a seat in front of one of the microphones. We only have, well, we have two now. Marcus, you will be next speaker after Natalia. Please come forward to the front row of seats and be ready to go next. Natalia, you may begin.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a parent of an elementary school child in BSD, and I'm here to make a request on behalf of a group of voices that often get overlooked in policy decisions, our youngest students. I'm asking you to consider extending recess or adding time for unstructured free play, especially for children in the early elementary grades. Ask a group of kids what they wish school had more of, and you'll hear it again and again, more recess. Adults often laugh at this, assuming it's just a wish for fun or a break from learning, but I'd ask that we take children at their word in this case. What if they do know what their bodies and brains need, and they're telling us? The science supports them. In Finland, as you may have heard, formal academic education doesn't even begin until age eight. The focus before that is on the child exploring the world, exploring play, engaging with one another, focusing on interests. And it's no coincidence that Finland has some of the highest rankings in education based on test scores in the world. And that is because unstructured free play isn't a luxury or a distraction from learning, it's a foundation for it. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, regular breaks for unstructured play improve focus, memory, and learning outcomes. Movement increases blood flow and oxygen to the brain, helping kids come back to the classroom refreshed and ready to absorb information. Simply put, play boosts performance. But the benefits go far beyond academics. The playground is where kids learn how to solve problems, regulate emotions, cooperate, and negotiate rules. Today, we teach these skills in the classroom, but where do kids get to actually practice them? Recently, I was on a Beaverton Moms Facebook group where a parent was considering homeschooling her child but hesitated because of the social aspect. The responses she got, don't bother, they barely get any time to play anyway. And despite being a lifelong advocate for public education, I had to admit this person had a point. We have to consider in 2025 what public schools have to offer, and an opportunity for children to adequately socialize is key. So I urge you to consider extending recess to at least one full hour a day or adding more time for free play for children, more than 15-minute blocks. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalia. The next speaker is Marcus, followed by Abishai.
Hello, board members. My name is Marcus Berger. I'm a Beaverton resident and a proud product of the Beaverton School District. I grew up in Cedar Hills in the 1980s, when Beaverton was still a small, closed community. It was the ideal place to grow up as a kid. I went to Ridgewood Elementary School, where my mother still lives near today. Growing up Jewish in a mostly non-Jewish neighborhood never felt isolating. The only time I noticed a difference was at Christmas, a holiday we didn't celebrate home, but that's when my mom would visit the class to share Hanukkah traditions. That effort on her part made me feel, not feel like I was lacking, and also gave others a glimpse into our rich heritage. But in fourth grade, I learned how deeply adults' cruelty can affect, I apologize, can affect a child. After being diagnosed with attention deficit disorder and an auditory processing delay, my teacher, Mrs. Bushnell, treated my challenges as defiance. She mocked me in front of classmates, turning my learning struggles into public shame. Only after my parents met with the principal, the late Mr. Edward Robinson, was I moved to a caring teacher who treated me with patience and respect. Now, I share this because I see echoes of that same cruelty today, not towards students with learning differences, but towards Jewish and Israeli kids being targeted by adults who should know better. Teachers and board members aren't acting out of ignorance. They know what antisemitism is, and yet they've chosen to perpetuate it. They've allowed personal politics to take precedence over the safety of Jewish students. They've turned complex, century-old geopolitical issues into simplistic morality play, casting the people of Israel as villains. Complex world issues don't belong in a middle school math class or a school board agenda as personal crusades. They require academic study and balance, not bias. And a board member who's part of an extremist political organization called the DSA, one whose own liberation caucus celebrated the murder of a Jewish couple outside a museum in Washington, DC last May, should absolutely be nowhere near a school board. Beaverton taught me the values of stability, respect, and inclusion. Those are the principles that should guide the district today. Not should students should ever feel unsafe, singled out because of identity, faith, or politics.
Sorry. Yeah. Abishai is here, and the next speaker is Ben.
Hi, testing.
Yes.
Hi, Abishai Makaya Shimerhorn. I am on the Oregon State Advisory Committee to the U.S. Civil Rights Commission, and I was forwarded the investigation report that this board requested and spoke to a lot of people, some of whom were interviewed for it and some of whom were not. I'm not sure what or how that was decided. Maybe someday somebody can illuminate to me on that. But I am speaking here on behalf of several teachers and families who feel unsafe in this district. And I don't mean theoretically unsafe, I mean uneasy in their classrooms, in their communities, and in their own skin. It's not paranoia, it's the product of a climate that your report manages to completely miss. Somehow, in more than 20 pages of dense analysis, the report never asks the obvious question: what happens when a leader with power normalizes antisemitic tropes under the banner of humanitarianism? Instead, it reduces Jewish fear to a quote-unquote "policy disagreement." And then, my favorite part, it cites Wikipedia to define a very important Hebrew term. Wikipedia, it's a word whose meaning is actually debated on Wikipedia, and that page has already changed since your report came out. And that's what happens, though, when the process values optics over accuracy. The word "hasbara" means explanation. The report quotes it like it's a conspiracy code, but in reality, it's just what Jewish people have been forced to do for generations. Explain. Explain why words matter. Explain why denial of Israel's rights to exist is not policy critique.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ben. Sorry, the next speaker is Ben, followed by Nick. Ben, please give your full name at the beginning of your comment. Thank you.
My name is Nick Nar. I wanted to say much gratitude to all of you for allowing us to have open testimony. And I wanted to say also, one of the things I really love about school boards is all of the periods at the beginning where you get to really commemorate wonderful students and inspiring teachers and activists who work in this community to make not only the teachers' jobs easier, but their lives easier, which is, well, that'll never be enough. I also wanted to read to you a few excerpts that I thought to be quite powerful as I learned more about this district and about my experience here in Oregon over the past couple of years. Forgive me, I'll quote. "If you've never been called an antisemite, then you are way too chill about genocide. Zionism and the belief in Israel's right to exist are rooted in Jewish supremacism. Won't someone please think of the baby killers? There is no Jewish state in the Middle East. You're confusing this with a colony of Europeans who converted to Judaism. The original Israelites, Hebrews, Canaanites, et cetera, that lived there thousands of years ago are the people called Palestinians today, whom Israel kills." There was a grammatical mistake, I corrected it. Zionism is antisemitic. Quite interesting from a non-Jewish person, that's okay. I'm guessing I can't curse, but F anyone that still talks about antisemitism. These are quotes from a Beaverton school teacher, who expresses these in a public forum, which are accessible to Jewish and Israeli students that attend the school. That's all I've got to say today. I really do thank you all.
Thank you, Ben. The next speaker is Nick, followed by Jenny. Nick, please give your full name at the beginning of your comments. Oh, sorry, sorry. Oh. Now it's Ben, so. Thank... Well, yeah, now it's Ben, okay.
Hello, Ben. Ben Schubert. Is this heard? Ben Schubert, thank you. This message comes to you from a concerned member of this community and a future parent. Like anybody else, everybody else here, I want to know that the community's children, including my own, are going to be educated by people and systems focused on education and emotional development. I am compelled to speak to you now today because my hopes are outright threatened by what I have observed recently. As you have heard from previous testimonies, staff and teachers have been openly, publicly vilifying entire ethnic groups. Amongst the examples mentioned earlier, a single example here of my own, a BSD educator posted on Instagram, public forum, "If you don't think Israel is evil, it is because you are too. Whatever your personal or political views and feelings are, this villainization of an entire nationality is beyond an objective declaration of antagonism towards any students with ancestry from the region. It is an influence on all students exposed to this," educator and their comments and their views. The same educator also reported, "We no longer demand a ceasefire, we demand an end to the state of Israel. This is clear endorsement of hostility and impressionable students who look up to teachers to tell them what to think, how to think, how to be fair and thoughtful are exposed to." Board members, I ask you, do you believe that educators of children encouraging them hatred based on geography and ancestry will lead to compassion, will lead students to peace, peaceful ideas, will lead to improvements, will lead to a more safe, more tolerant community? This matter is extremely upsetting to me, is extremely upsetting to my community members, and we would like to see what is done about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. The next speaker is Jenny, followed by Jessica.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, and superintendent. My name is Jenny Mackey. I'm a resident Beaverton School District. I'm speaking today out of concern for the use of social media and the ethical responsibilities entrusted to our elected school board members. While I fully support the right of individuals to express personal views, I believe that when those views are shared by someone in a position of public trust, especially in a school district committed to equity and inclusion, they carry additional weight and responsibility. The Beaverton School District's policy clearly states that board members must model respectful behavior and avoid actions that undermine the credibility of the board or create a hostile environment. The posts, which are perceived by many as politically or religiously charged, risk sending a troubling signal to our students that it is acceptable to publicly express views that may marginalize or stereotype our students. This is not just a matter of personal opinion, it becomes a matter of public impact. I have two teenage sons in the Beaverton School District. My eldest son was the victim of antisemitic bullying last year, and while the school administration handled the matter, it is troubling that we're now excusing this behavior in our board members. Under policy, board members are Under policy, board members are expected to act in ways that preserve public trust and avoid speaking on behalf of the board unless authorized. Even when labeled as personal, statements from board members can be interpreted as reflective of district values. When those statements appear to validate harmful narratives, they risk eroding the inclusive environment we strive to maintain. Furthermore, Oregon ethic laws require public officials to avoid using their position to promote personal views that conflict with official duties. I believe this situation warrants a thorough review of how public communication by board members, especially on sensitive topics, can affect student well-being and community trust. I urge the board to reaffirm its commitment to respectful, inclusive leadership and to ensure that all members hold the ethical standards that protect our students and our district's integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. The next speaker is Jessica, followed by Lizzie.
My name is Jessica Pierce. I identify as a white, neurodiverse, queer, cis woman, and you she her pronouns. I'm a BSD parent and staff. Cada persona en nuestra comunidad tiene derechos y tenemos una responsabilidad comunicar y proteger estos derechos para todos. Por eso voy a leer una de las tarjetas rojas, un recuerdo bien valioso. Todas esas personas en los Estados Unidos, independientemente de su estatus migratorio, tienen ciertos derechos y protecciones bajo la Constitución de los Estados Unidos. Usted tiene derechos constitucionales. No abre la puerta si una gente de inmigración está tocando la puerta. No conteste ninguna pregunta de una gente de inmigración si trata de hablar con usted. Usted tiene el derecho a guardar silencio. No firme nada sin antes hablar con un abogado. Usted tiene el derecho de hablar con un abogado. Si usted está fuera de su casa, pregúntale al gente si tiene la libertad de irse, y si le dice que sí, váase con tranquilidad. Every single one of us needs to know how to protect our community during this fascist regime. Just today, ICE agents kidnapped a young person right near Glencoe High School. Where are the Noya Rights trainings for all BSD staff certified and classified? Where are partnerships with organizations like the Portland Immigrant Rights Coalition, which is offering MIGRO Watch, ICE Watch trainings over the next few weeks? As I said in February eight, when I last came before this board, silence, appeasement, half-measures are unacceptable. Paolo Ferry writes, "There's no such thing as a neutral education. Education either functions as an instrument to bring about conformity or freedom. I call on you to fight for public education in Beaverton to be an instrument of freedom." Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. The next speaker is Lizzie, followed by David.
Hi, I'm Lizzie Russell. I care deeply about supporting neighborhood public schools and implore you to consider every option in the best utilization of the Raleigh Hills campus, such as boundary adjustments, options, or reinstating K through eight. Local neighborhood schools like Raleigh Park, a title school, are the heart of thriving communities that support, uplift, and encourage students to belong, believe, and achieve their academic and extracurricular goals. A sense of belonging is driven by staff recognizing every student and noticing if something looks off. It is feeling safe, seen, and heard in school, something that is fueled by tight-knit community support, already well-established at schools like Raleigh Park. Community is built in the small moments, seeing a neighbor at drop-off, walking with friends to and from school. It is organic and personal, not manufactured. Tearing apart what has been built over generations would be devastating. Trust in the district is broken, and community school closure will neither improve sentiment nor bolster enrollment. While budget, facility, safety, and staffing models are critically important considerations, the best interests of our children must be at the heart of decision-making. Closing neighborhood schools will systematically dismantle cherished communities. Numerous families I know have enrolled elsewhere due to lack of transparency. Many existing families will abandon the district if forced into a mega school. We are confused, scared, and sad at the prospect of losing the threads that unite our communities. These kids love their schools and are happy and excited to be where they feel comfortable and safe, and isn't that something that we should not take for granted? Your decisions will have tremendous impact on these kids' lives, families, and communities. They are not just numbers in your ed spec. They are real. We are real. The ramifications of these choices will endure for generations. Help our kids belong, believe, and achieve. I expect the next LRFP meeting will present scenarios that reflect what the community loudly and clearly values: neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizzie. The next speaker is David, followed by Matthew.
I'm a retired teacher from Tiger Towaltin, and I'm Jewish. I'm here because I am retired, and I am from a different school district. If I was a current teacher in Beaverton, I would not feel comfortable standing before you. A Beaverton teacher and a leader of this district have both created an environment that is aggressively unfriendly towards Jewish teachers and students. When a district leader posts their hatred towards Israel and any Jews that support Israel, I feel disrespected and denigrated. When I see the 20 to 50 social media posts that a Beaverton teacher puts up every day, including the ones you heard about earlier, I feel targeted and unsafe as a minority. If I was a student here, I would be afraid to be in this teacher's class. If I was a teacher here, I would be extremely uncomfortable with her as a colleague, and I would feel defenseless and frankly unsafe with the district leader like I mentioned. I ask that this board and administration stand strongly against antisemitism and for you to stand up for your Jewish teachers and students. And I have a little bit of extra time here, so I just want to say, I'm a huge baseball fan and a Dodgers fan, and they're playing the playoffs right now, right this very minute, and I'm missing the game specifically so I could be here and present to you. That's how important this is to me, so I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Our final speaker is Matthew. Go ahead, Matthew.
Hello, Board. My name is Matthew Seidman. My students attend Oak Hills Elementary School and Tumwater Middle School. I ran out of time last time talking about student-teacher ratios, but I had a little bit more to contribute. Other district issues are lack of spelling homework and the Lexia software in elementary schools. I'm shocked that spelling is not required in elementary school. I'm disappointed that there is no homework in upper elementary school grades. It doesn't necessarily need to be graded, but something needs to be given weekly for parents to be involved. I have absolutely no idea what my kids are learning each week, and I have nothing to keep them engaged on days off. The school district has been doing a great job with the math software, Dreambox. It is a great way for kids to learn in class and at home, in addition to homework. The district does not currently have an equivalent English writing software. Lexia has been used in the past and needs to be offered every year like Dreambox is currently. I believe a large, a larger or additional bond with, will address these many issues in a cost-effective, equitable, and district-wide manner, and I hope you agree. I also have an Oak Hills Elementary School-specific issue, car drop-off and pickup. This has been a safety and efficiency issue for the last seven years. It usually involves finger-pointing by the principal and the school district staff with no resolution. The policy, roles, and responsibilities for school parking are clear but poorly enforced by school principal and staff. Parents are supposed to pull in as far as possible, drive in and out as spaces open up, stay in their vehicle, and only let their kids out by themselves on the right side. Rarely, this happens, leading to long lines, cars backed up into traffic, kids cutting in between vehicles, angry drivers, traffic violations, and accident near misses. The safety of, on the streets leading up to the school parking lot is not supported by the district, the police, the county, or the HOA. The entire community has done nothing to address this, and I fear the only way to get attention and action is for a student to be killed.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you all for sharing your comments. We will now move to our items of information. So, items for information, the first one we have is Beaverton Education Foundation, a presentation by Lauren Grant.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Chair Garg, members of the committee, and Dr. Balderas are members of the board. I'm so sorry. I have it passed where I used to talk to committee members, so y'all are very important in every way. I'm Lauren Garrett. I'm the executive director of the Beaverton Education Foundation. With me tonight is Holly Van Houten, who's our Director of Programs and Grants, because if I don't have the answers, then Holly probably does. I will walk through my slides, or I can just sort of talk until they're up. I think you all have them in your board packets as well. But I was asked this evening to provide an update on our last school year's impact in the district, and that's what I'm here to do. I think many of you are very familiar with the foundation, have been personally supportive, and have been partners of ours for many, many years, and for that, we are grateful and appreciative. As you are familiar, our foundation exists as a private nonprofit to support and enhance the educational opportunities for all students in all 54 schools throughout the district. We have very, very clear vision, mission, and value statements that I will not read to you, but I can advance now. And you may read those on your own. I do want to, there we go, just reflect back on this past school year, and this impact report is both in your packet on our website and here in front of you, just with a few highlights. Our Beaverton Education Foundation Board, of which Katie is a wonderful member, spent time this last spring reviewing and reflecting and considering our strategic action work and what we've done in the past and what we should and would like to do going forward. And out of that strategic action process came a very clear consensus around the goal of tying our investments to three cornerstones, which are a good start to education, investing in core academics, career-connected learning, and hands-on experiential learning. And that is what the theme you'll see throughout our impact report. In 2024-25, we were able to provide 127,670 additional academic hours in increased contact with students. We supported 2,048 students in real work experience through our career-connected investments, and we were able to impact 100% of the 54 schools, not all the same and not in, in the same way every time, but we do reach into the halls of every school. And in our first-ever winter break campaign, we were very, very fortunate to partner with over 270 individuals, businesses, and community partners to support our students over winter break. So, our, our main investments come in the form of our Kids Count grants, which are likely school-wide initiatives or after-school or summer learning initiatives where we can really make the, the greatest impact. We're focused on low SES schools and academic programs that help struggling students move toward academic success. Last year, we awarded 40 Kids Count grants totaling $155,000 and serving more than 7,000 students. Included in that is our focus on core academics. This is a highlight of our literacy work, and I just want to pull out a couple of key points that I think are worth noting. We invested 40, over $42,000 for summer reading initiatives. This is something we've been doing for years and continue to see incredible outcomes, both from our data collection and the anecdotal responses we find from teachers and students and families about what it meant to have continued and supported reading experiences during the summer months. One of our highlights from last year was at Montclair Elementary School. Of the students that participated in our summer program, where they take home books that they interact with and read throughout the summer and maintain a really constant focus on reading, none of the 50 students who returned in the fall had any reading loss. 100% of the kindergartners increased an entire reading level, 60% of second graders increased a reading level, and 40% of third graders. So, they base that off of the spring assessments and then they reassess in the fall. So, we're very proud of that. Another extremely important program for us, and the district has been incredibly helpful as a partner, are our middle school after-school support for students through the S4 program, where we support students with homework and academic support one day a week, and if they participate and maintain their attendance on those days, they're eligible to participate in an extracurricular sports experience another day that week. We've seen that this is popular with students, a way for teachers and staff to keep connected and maintain that bond with students, and to incentivize students to stay in school, attend school, and be able to participate in that. It's our attempt at combating chronic absenteeism. This next slide is a highlight, especially for me. I particularly have enjoyed watching these students and staff explore an opportunity at Aloha High School, where students in the specialized programs became experienced and talented baristas, turning the classroom into a true life, true experience, a real cafe experience. The students not only learned everything from sourcing ingredients and making the drinks to working the front desk, the register, customer service skills, and true, really, really incredible learning experiences for them to take into the real world for work experience. This came from ideas from teachers within the school BEF-partnered, and the results are just incredible. And if you haven't been there to have a, a coffee, I highly encourage you to make a visit. It's, it's a great, it's a real joy. This past year was the fourth year that we have been supporting the Lending Library, which is the opportunity for the district to provide technology and, and enhanced STEAM and STEM tools to elementary schools. We have been making investments in this program so that we can both repair and enhance the access to the technology within that lending library so that students throughout the district have access to these tools that they might not otherwise have because individual schools cannot purchase these. We were really excited to highlight a few new tools that perhaps you're familiar with. I wasn't, but they are Ozobots, Edison's, and Indie Robots. They are, these are their hands at work, using these tools in a way to really get that hands-on learning experience. The teachers and the students and the families, the quotes are there, they speak for themselves. It's a really extremely important and interactive experiential learning opportunity for these kids, and it's something that we're proud to continue investing in. The last year was also the first year we branched out from our academic support focus to partner with the district on the winter break Feed My Body/Feed My Brain campaign. It was extremely rewarding, and it was a wonderful challenge, and we felt like we really met it thanks to incredible support from our community partners, including all of you members on the school board, members of the city council, members of the Beaverton Area Chamber of Commerce, the list goes on and on. If you're at the BSD Awards Breakfast on Thursday, you might hear more about this. But it took a huge, huge partnership throughout our community, and the message was very clear. We do care deeply about our students. We care about them being fed. We know that they can't learn if they are hungry, and this is a simple message that resonates throughout our district and beyond. We had incredible success, and we are repeating that experience this winter. We're in this sort of soft phase launch of the campaign, and we will be kicking that off in full effect in November as we head into the, the winter season. Thank you for all of you who participated last year. I encourage you to do so again. There is a QR code for you if you would like to make a donation. These are very small numbers, which I can't even see from here, but they do just sort of reflect the breadth and scope, I think, of BEF, and perhaps some people have ideas around what we do and have, have heard about certain things, but maybe don't know all about the different elements in which we invest. So, a total of 164 different projects and programs last year. 91% of students personally and individually participated in some form. And- of our major investments, the majority of our work goes into school-wide programs. They aren't the ones you maybe hear about, but they are the ones that have true impact across the schools by reaching the majority of students within schools. Our classroom grants are also a significant part of our investments and funding, and the Winter Break Food Campaign became something very important on our investments last year. The majority of our funding comes from individual gifts. We count on individuals in our community, both current families, families who have students no longer in the schools but still care about our schools, community members who maybe aren't attached to school, which turns out is about two and three, two out of three individuals in our area. So there are a lot of people out there that don't have kids in the district, but who care about this district, are watching what we do and care about being here and being supportive. So we are grateful for those individuals. I want to, I want to save time for questions at the end. I do want to give you a little look ahead. We're pretty excited about a few things coming up this school year that have just begun to be announced. The City of Beaverton made a grant to BEF to work with school, elementary schools within the City of Beaverton limits to provide some extended learning opportunities, and we have awarded two grants to both Shaheilum and William Walker, they know that, right? Where we'll be providing an after-school experience with their teachers. One is focused on math for grades three through five at Shaheilum, and then at William Walker, we'll be providing reading and math support for ELL students in grades three through five. So those are two awards that we are thrilled to partner with the City of Beaverton on, and we'll be getting those up and running very shortly. The other exciting news comes from our friends at the KLA Foundation. They are a partner in the Beaverton area, and they have made an investment into BEF, where we will be working to launch K through three math literacy in Title I elementary schools over the next three years. It's a robust award that we were thrilled to be a recipient of. We were highly competitive, and we were the number-one strongest proposal that came into them, they told us. They are excited to work with us, and we will be working with, in this first year, a cohort of teachers from four different schools. We'll be supporting them with professional development, developing math-rich classroom environments, offering before- and after-school support for students, and also helping families become engaged by giving them schools and tools and experiences for them to keep talking about and keep opening up the ideas of math at home. So those are two big awards, and then finally, later this week, we will be announcing our next round of S4 awards at middle schools for this coming school year. That is a little bit about us, but I would like to leave time for questions, and also welcome thoughts and your inquiries.
Thank you. You're open for discussion. Dr. Potter?
Thank you for sharing the information and for the presentation. Dr. Trong and I are the Beaverton School Board Liaisons for BEF, and we got to attend our first board meeting for BEF last month. And already, I'm new, we're new to the role, but we could see very clearly how well BEF serves as a way to bring our community together in order to support and invest in our students and their learning experiences and learning outcomes. It's not just fluff. It really is backed by a lot of support and data, and we just, and we are so grateful for that connectedness to our community, anytime we can share the amazing things that are happening in our classrooms with our community, and anytime we can invite our community in to offer their support and their expertise. And we could see that in the BF Board experience, that that is the collective hope and vision. So thank you so much for sharing that and for kicking off the new winter break campaign. We're very excited for it. So thank you.
Thank you. You announce. Director Kasim?
Thank you so much for that presentation and walking us through some of the incredible work that BEF is doing. I just had a quick question. If you could help sort of highlight some of given equitable outcomes being at the center of mission and values for BEF, like how they are pronounced in some of the initiatives that you have either done last year or that are ahead, that we can sort of center on, like, hey, here is, that's how it's baked into some of these initiatives.
Yeah, I'd love Holly to be able to speak about that. She's the one who brings the grants in and puts them at the door. So she walks that daily.
Well, there's a couple of different ways that we prioritize equitable access to educational opportunities, and the way we both pursue outside funding from foundations and corporations that's at the forefront of everything we talk about, but in how we push that money out into the schools. So with our Kids Count Grants, which are the after-school, summer, and sort of district-wide initiatives, almost every one of those, I think everyone, has some kind of equitable or some kind of targeting of, students are really striving to, for academic success. So, for example, like at Sunset High School, we put in money to their cram-and-jam club, which is an after-school club that is helping ninth and 10th graders with their math and their science, particularly around their physics classes. They recruit students who are below grade level, and they work closely with those teachers to give them that kind of academic boost. So even though Sunset's not a low SES school, they're working with the population of kids that really need that extra support. And we got great feedback that, you know, these kids who went to homework club and got some snacks were like much more confident in their physics classes, and were started to participate more. So that's one of the things we like to see. Even the Lending Library, the reason we're pursuing it is because at the elementary school levels, many schools can buy their own set of robots, but we wanted to make it in a way that everybody could have access to those robots. And so actually, that library, I believe it served 29 schools last year, but so it was kind of an approach to equity. So many of our programs have some kind of connection to the academics. Our summer reading program has both a combination of Title I schools and non-Title I schools, but everyone who participates in it is a student who was receiving reading intervention services in the spring, and then they went home with a bag full of high-interest books, and we measure how they're doing. And we've gotten the data from Montclair. We're getting the data from the other schools this week. So that's how we're doing it. And certainly, like the K3 Math Initiative, that's all for Title I schools, where like entire classrooms are really struggling. And so we want to help teachers learn to best practices in helping kids who are really coming in not quite even having some numeracy, and to give them that good foundation. So that's how we are addressing equity in our work.
Thank you. Appreciate that context, and again, would love to continue to build on that and make sure we kind of amplify and highlight that in the initiative. So thank you again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director Kasim. Dr. Perez?
Hi, thanks. Nice to see you again. If you want to put back the QR code of Feed My Body/Feed My Brain, that might be good. I know that this year, you're aiming at 50, gift cards for $50 instead of the 30, knowing that the impact is higher and more families are needing that little bit of extra money for food. But I really thought it was amazing how many families and how many, we, last year, we were at a spot where we didn't, we knew we wouldn't have enough money to provide the gift cards that were needed by our families. And so when you started that campaign, it actually allowed us to get the gift cards for food during that time of winter break when we couldn't, we weren't feeding kids in schools. So it's exciting to see that you have the campaign again for this year, and I think Melissa and Vaughn have been like encouraging all of us to donate, and I think there's probably an update that we're getting there, for all of our, our board members. I got mine in late by accident, but I think I got it in. But if people want to donate, I think that's a really good, good space, and it goes to all of our schools.
Correct, and thank you. And last year, we were able to meet the requests from every single school. So there were requests from every school. We met those requests that came in. Each school comes up with their own needs assessment and determined their own individual numbers, but that was the goal last year. We do, of course, know that the need will be greater this year, which is why we've increased both the value of the card and the overall goal of the campaign, because we expect there will be many, many more students and families that will be needing extra support.
Thank you. I just want to point out that, students, you are here for the first time. This is the time you can also ask questions. So I would encourage if you have any questions or comments that you would like to make. It's open. Dr. Trong?
I also want to emphasize what Dr. Potter mentioned earlier. This is our first, we attended our first meeting last month, and I was really impressed with the dedication of the board members that you have on the board, because they're also diverse in different areas. Also, that looking at the numbers of the students that you have been serving, it's 38,000 student plus, and you know, we have like 35,000, 36,000 students, so you almost serve the size of our district. What I appreciate is you're working with our teachers to kind of like support them in the areas that they really need a support where we, as a school district, wasn't able to. So we appreciate that. But I think I really appreciate the fact that you really, all your projects are research-based, proven practices, and also you follow up with assessment, follow up what works and what didn't work, so that you can continue on and learn the lesson, and also work with the teachers as well. So that is very impressive. I also want to really thank, with the Feed My Body/Feed My Brain, I really would like to thank you, all the staff members, admin, executive directors, who have contributed, because we want to show as district staff and board members that we do care. So almost all our board members have donated, so we will get the goal of 100%. So, thank you so much.
And it does not need to be limited to board members. You're welcome to share this wide and far with your known networks and your communities, and that QR code will give, will be driven into the Beaverton School Board's overall bucket. So we, it does not need to be limited. It's not an exclusive group, let's just say. We are very welcoming and inviting to everyone who would like to donate and participate. Thank you. You're welcome, and thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, I want to thank you for the wonderful work that you guys are doing, and yes, even if you cannot get the QR code, their link is there on their website. Please spread the word. You don't have to be the only person giving. Everybody can give. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the enrollment update.
All right. Good evening, Chair Garg, members of the school board. Dr. Balderas here tonight to present our annual enrollment report based on the October 1 enrollment of our district. Here joining me is Robert McCracken, our demographer, who's going to lead the presentation. Once we have the presentation complete, please ask some questions. So, Robert?
All right, thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Again, my name is Robert McCracken. I'm the district's demographer. I have a longer title, but it's the easiest one to say. So we're here tonight to give you the enrollment report. Again, these are based on October 1. We actually take the snapshot on September 30, but that doesn't really matter. Every year, we do this snapshot. This comprises our official enrollment for purposes of projecting for next year's enrollment, harmonizing all of our school enrollment levels for capacity purposes and that sort of thing. So in the packet, there is a longer document, this guy here, which has most of the details in there, which you can read at your leisure. I don't really get applause when I do this presentation. The, I'll give you the big picture first. This is our grand total enrollment bar chart showing since 2015, and that gray line, gray arrow there shows our enrollment since about, since 2019. That was our peak enrollment year. The following year was the COVID pandemic. We saw a significant drop in our enrollment that year, and we've seen a significant drop pretty much every year since then. This year was the largest drop in enrollment since 2020, since the COVID pandemic began. And down, overall, we're down a little over, you know, or a little under 10 and 1/2% of our enrollment since 2019. Some of that is due to the pandemic itself, but also there were things going on in our, just structurally within our demographics, that meant that we were very near the top of our enrollment at that point anyway. This is from the enrollment, excuse me, this is from the enrollment summary page. It just shows you the detailed enrollment change by school level, and then for other programs within the district, which include our charter schools, self-contained specialized programs, and the like. And you can see the figures. I won't read through them, but it was a sizable drop this year, and particularly at the elementary school level, middle school saw a gain of 41 students, and that's primarily due to cohorts. We had some larger cohorts moving into middle school and a smaller cohort moving out, so we saw a little bump there. And next year, we will probably see a decline in middle school, because one of those large cohorts will move out and will be replaced by one that's smaller. And then some decline at the high school level as well. And let's see, the, this is a slide showing you the projection versus the actual. The projection error was larger than we liked this year, particularly at the elementary level, although at middle school and high school, it was more accurate. High school was actually fairly accurate. We were off by 14 kids. The next slide kind of shows you a, this shows you a picture of the projection, prediction of the change by grade level, and then what actually happened. So in general, the projection was in the right direction at all grade levels. We were looking for a decline at kindergarten, a decline at first grade, second grade, so, and what have you. So the red line is what was projected, the blue line is what actually happened, and in most cases, we saw a lower actual than projection. At the high school and the middle school levels, you can see that those numbers were actually much closer together. In particular, kindergarten, this is a very small kindergarten class, and I believe, yeah, I think I can, I'll give you some more detail of that on the next slide. But this is a very small kindergarten class compared to years before. This slide gives you a picture of our K-12 enrollment since 2015, looking at each cohort as it moves through. And the little arrow that I've put in, starting with, I believe it's the class of 2028, in the top left, under 2015, when they were kindergartners, and then each arrow is that class moving through, that cohort moving through. So this year, they're sophomores. Red numbers are large, blue numbers are small. And as you can see, the largest numbers, the largest cohorts in the school district, pretty much in history, have been moving their way out. They've been matriculating out, and they're being replaced by increasingly smaller cohorts coming in at the kindergarten and at the kindergarten level, and then up into first grade. So this is where, when I said that there were some structural things happening, this is where we started to see this. Before even the pandemic, we were seeing, we had already had probably, we had already had our largest kindergarten class in 2015. This year, one thing of note is our first-grade class this year is the same size as it was in kindergarten last year. Typically, we see a two to three Typically, we see a two to three percent increase from kindergarten moving into first grade. That's because, you know, families may not send a student to kindergarten. It's not necessarily required. They may hold them home or go to an alternative, you know, pre-K program, something along those lines. And then they'll enroll them. So we usually see a bump from kindergarten into first grade. And this year, we didn't see any bump at all. We basically saw no movement. That's, that's, that's very unusual, and I don't think I've seen that before. So I'm hoping that we don't see that going forward in the future. That would be, that would be another downward, you know, downward pressure on our, on our enrollment. Kindergarten class size has been declining over the years. This, this gives you kind of an idea of what's, what's been going on. Kindergarten classes are very directly tied to births. And the number of births within the Beaverton School District has been going down since about 2007. This slide shows you a, there's a dashed line there. That, that is a kindergarten forecast prepared by Flow Analytics. The last time they did a forecast for us, which was based in 2022. And unfortunately, each year, the kindergarten class, the actual kindergarten class has fallen below that forecast, which means that the assumptions from that forecast have not held. I've spoken with Flow Analytics over the years, and, and they've, they've found that they would, they've needed to reduce their, their kindergarten estimates on almost every forecast they've done since, since the pandemic. So that's it's another one of the, another one of the factors that's, that's affecting enrollment here. I believe this is my, this is my last slide. It gives you kind of an impressionistic idea of things. The blue, the heavy blue line, that's our total enrollment over the years. I believe it starts in the nineteen nineties. I can't quite read that. But we had, we had sustained growth over the years with a couple of dips during recessions. Those are the two, the two kind of tan lines. And then we have the recession in, in tan as well. And then we've declined ever since 2019. The forecasts back in 2012, when we did a forecast leading up to the 2014 bond, had us, I'm sorry, the 2012 vintage, yeah, ten-year forecast, had us basically still growing for a long time. The 2018 vintage ten-year forecast, which we did just before the, the last bond, actually adjusted and saw us beginning to decline, but gradually over time. The 2022 vintage ten-year forecast, which is the last green, green line there, the one that we're most closely following at the moment, has us landing at an enrollment equivalent to about our two thousand or two thousand one enrollment levels. We have, because of, because you want to update a forecast fairly regularly, we've actually opened a contract with, with Flow Analytics to take our 2025 enrollment as a new base year and do another ten-year projection, ten-year, ten-year forecast of enrollment. And I expect that that will probably come in lower. So if I were to show this slide to you next year, I would have the 2022 vintage, and then I'd have the 2025 vintage, and that would probably, that'll probably show us a little bit lower in the, in the ten-year forecast year. So that is, that forecast, it will come to you. Part of Flow's contract is to come and present that to you and, and answer your questions about, about the ten-year forecast. And that, that usually is, is ready in early, in the early part of the next year. But we'll, we'll work with what scheduling works, of course. In terms of the funding and financial implications, this is actually a slide from Mike. But in general, our, our funding from the state is determined by enrollment. And I won't go, I won't go through this, but you get the picture and you probably hear from Mike a lot about this. So that's the end of the presentation. If you have any questions or comments, happy to answer them.
Questions? Anybody? Any student? Director Carson?
Thank you. Thank you for walking through that. Really helpful. Can you go back to like, I think it's slide eight? The one prior, yes. I was trying to kind of get a, a sense of the, the forecast, the kinder forecast. Do you know if it uses like birth rates, right? Like what is, what is it relying on versus what's actually happening? Because again, I was looking at this, sorry, just going to contextualize and then let you answer. Like looking at the previous slide where, you know, 2015, when it was at peak and kind of going down. And obviously, there was the cliff. And then I think, you know, the expectation was course correction. Just, just trying to untangle how much of it is tied to the after effect of the pandemic and reimagining what schooling is for a lot of families versus actual decline in birth rates that did the plunge. And I don't know if you have any information or any context that you can help.
I, I think it's both. We can't deny that the, that the number of births is going down and has, has been declining every year. In migration, of course, will, will augment that. But nationwide and globally, we're seeing births decline and birth rates decline. This particular slide, and we talked with Flow about this when they prepared it. They, they actually have to, at some point, they have to do a forecast of births themselves. And when we, when we prepared this, they assumed that there would be some increase in births because of the structure of the, of the population. We're going to have more people, like the Gen Z population, moving into childbearing years. So, and they also, we're, we're looking for basically a return to not necessarily normal, but somewhat below normal capture rates, if you want to call it that, of kinder, kinder classes from, from births. And that just hasn't proven out. I, I think it is, it's a combination of, of probably some, some behavioral changes. Families seem to be keeping their, their kinders, you know, at home. But again, the, the change of the SEER in terms of first grade, that's, that's something new.
I also want to say that we're no different than many other districts in Oregon, as well as many on the northern end of the United States. You're going to see a lot of urbans that are declining enrollment. So it's a, we look very similar to Boulder, Colorado, or Bellevue, Washington, for example, that are similar to us.
Yeah. No, thank you for that context and, and totally understanding the trends. I'm, I'm just looking at, again, the steepness of it and trying to see if we can overlay like, hey, here's one factor, which is declining birth rate and all of that. But is there any additional factor that, you know, beyond that, that we can also account for? And then adjust for, right, for projections and then how we approach it. So, but thank you, I appreciate the context.
I, I'd say one more thing is that our, you know, Beaverton has been a beneficiary of economic and employment growth in Washington County for a long time. And I'm sure we all read the news this summer about Intel's layoffs. That's, that's the kind of thing that impacts, impacts Beaverton schools. We are home to many, many families that, you know, have, have family members that work at Intel or the associated industries around it. So in-migration has been important for Oregon in general and Beaverton in particular. And if we're seeing those, if we're seeing those trends start to reverse or slow down, then we will probably see that. And that's, that's something that I'm going to be speaking with, with Flow about in particular. That's, we've actually started talking about that already in terms of the next forecast.
Thank you.
Dr. Perez, Dr. Chong, and Dr. Carpenter.
I have a question for Mike. I'm just wondering if the, your forecasted budgets that you've been sharing with us actually take into account the numbers that are decreasing and into what goes into our funds? Or if it's been, which number are we using for our forecasting?
We use Robert's numbers, and we trend those for the year and, and kind of try to determine what that's going to translate into as number of students of our ADM, ADM-R. So yes, we use these numbers. Absolutely.
So, and are, do we adjust as you're sharing with us? Are we adjusting for, we thought it was this, but it's actually twenty-one eighty-three?
We do. So probably three weeks ago, we updated our numbers with Department of Education in terms of what our enrollment was this year, that we had, we had actually fallen further than we had thought. Now, that doesn't impact funding in this year because we're being paid on last year's funding because we're always at the higher of the previous year's funding or the current year's funding. So it won't have an impact this year, it will have an impact next year in terms of our numbers. But yes, we've, we've accounted for those and we've updated those with Department of Education.
Thank you. And then my second one was, I think, I, I remember looking and it was, there was a graph on, one of our graphs that had it by regional groups. So I thought that was really interesting because I was wondering like, is there a certain region of our district that, where it's decreasing more or quicker? And I was noticing that there, like the CW, which is Central West.
Oh, these are my, oh, on the.
Page thirty-seven of the report, yeah.
Yeah.
How, I was just curious about the regions and how we were like, I just was, I thought that was something that was interesting. Because I didn't know like if, like Nike had a lot of cuts in, in people. Not that all Nike people live near a certain area, but I was just trying to see if there's a trend of where we're losing. And there were a couple of areas where we had more. But really, we've lost across the board.
Yeah, we, we have lost across the board. These are my own somewhat arbitrary collections of elementary schools and their boundaries. So I, or, or attending students. And one year is not necessarily enough to really give you, you know, the, the whole picture. But what, what was surprising actually is that we saw some decline in the Northwest and W, which includes Springville, Sato, Jacob Wismer, and that, that portion of the district. I think we're starting to see Springville and, and Sato kind of level out in terms of their enrollment. And at the same time, other portions of that, of that area of the district don't have any residential development, haven't for many years. And, and those cohorts are, are getting smaller over time.
And I was noticing like a lot more homes for sale in the area too. Like just, I think with the federal, just cuts in general and people having, struggling a little bit more that we might lose more because more folks says they need to, they need, they may need to sell or move.
Yeah. And anecdotally, up in the North, North Bethlehem area, go up there to, I go up there to see what's going on with the developments. As most of them are done by this point. Four or five years ago, you'd go up and a, every single vacant lot would have a sold sign on it. And today, there are fully constructed homes that have for sale signs in front of them. So the demand, I think, has diminished significantly. So we're, we're seeing fewer, we're seeing fewer families.
And a lot of the buildings that we were, we've talked about before is a lot of the buildings that are going up now, the apartments complexes are all like studio, not necessarily family complexes, but more for a single, like a one-bedroom per studio, so that impacts as well.
Yes, market rate, market rate multifamily housing does not actually generate very many students. And the, the anecdotal, one that I bring out every once in a while is the old Kmart site on Murray and TV Highway. It has roughly, I believe it has four hundred and twenty-two units. It was built five or six years ago. And every time I look to see how many students are there, there are about twenty total within the, within the complex. So there are definitely housing types that they're able to attract more students. Affordable housing, affordable housing, regulated affordable housing developments, especially if they have larger units, like two and three-bedroom units. They'll, they will, they can accommodate families, and we usually have a lot more students coming from those, from those communities.
Dr. Chong?
I had a question from your slide seven, slide deck fifty-seven. This year's kinder class seemed like a steeper decline. I don't know if you have any thoughts on why this year's was lower than sort of a slower, like a steeper decline?
I, I, this data is fourteen days old.
Fair.
But I, I have a hunch that it's, it is related to in-migration, to the district slowing down in particular due to.
A slowdown in, in migration?
In migration.
Great, okay, that makes sense.
That's, that's my hunch at the moment. But also, it is, I mean, we, we projected a smaller class, but it does seem to be significantly smaller.
Thank you. And then when we first looked at this slide, you mentioned that we were kind of at our peak of kinders in, in 2015 for reasons. And, and I think you wanted to not like bore us, but I'm curious, is there something, you know, that we're built out? Like just housing-wise, kind of to your previous point? That's why we were maybe at our peak for kinders?
It was, it was when we, we, we had kinder cohorts or birth cohorts that were reaching their peak as well. But we also had a lot of in-migration to the district in 2015. Around that time, that was when the Sato neighborhoods, Springville was growing, you know, significantly. We had a lot of growth in Bonnie Slope, even in Cedar Mill. Twenty fifteen was also the year that we offered full-day kindergarten for all schools. So that was, that was a bump just in and of itself. But yeah, since then, that's, you know, that's, then you're starting to, to get into the reduction in the, in the size of the, of the kindergarten cohorts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chong.
Thank you for the presentation. I think the kindergarten enrollment decline is really crucial because I think that's how we built our school district enrollment up. I have been looking at the numbers and thinking about the questions that all of us are asking, why such a decline in enrollment? And based on the experience and also based on the birthday demographic that we have. But I also think that the reason that you also stated is that the house pricing, you know? I believe that there's, it's just like in urban district, a lot of people are moving out because they can't really afford to stay. Because out the housing is kind of go up and higher and higher as well, is, that might be one other reason. And also the, you know, the, I was talking to my husband and we were talking about, oh, you know, Nike and Intel laying off a lot of people. And so therefore, we might see decline in enrollment because of moving. But I also said, well, maybe that will give us more kids because now they can't afford private schools, right? So, but, but my, my point is we need to look at, that is important because we also have a lot more options. And we have to create more options or more programs in our district to, to engage our parents. Because once their parents take their kids out of private school, then you can see that all their siblings are going to private school. Not one or two will go to private school and the other two will go, or one or two will go to public school, right? So I think the recruitment of kindergarten, I mean, based on for us as the board and staff, is we also need to kind of like, maybe, I don't know what we're doing right now for kindergarten recruitment, but I think that's one option that we can also look into. And also expanding our programs, like CTE in more schools or dual-language programs, or what other programs are attracting parents right now nationally or in Oregon? So I think that's something that we can look into. So that's kind of what my thoughts are on the enrollment decline and enrollment because I think it's so crucial for us to look into that. We know that there are some circumstances that we can't control, but there's also things that we can also try to do better, right? I was doing some number as well by doing that on page seven of your presentation. That's a general education cohort. If you look at, don't look at that right now because it's confusing. But if you look at the kindergarten enrollment for two thousand twenty-one, and then you look at the, by the time that they get to two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four, they will be in third grade, right? So therefore, if they have any siblings, any money, you should, we should be able to look at increase for kindergarten. I'm just doing. I'm just doing this number scenarios on when you look at the data, you can kind of look at the data and see how you can project how things could go, right? Just in cases, it's just looking at the birth weight alone. And so, so that's kind of why I was looking at that graph and I thought it was very telling on how the decline happened over year, over the year as well. And then switching to the slide before that, you also have K-12 general education projected VS actual change by grade level. So almost all grade level went down, but, and then the whole total off because it's a protection, right? So it's about three hundred students off. So therefore, going back to budget. So that would be a big budget for us for next year. To consider, is that a different number that we consider for next year for our funding?
So we'll take that number and we'll annualize it to come up with what we think is the average number of students enrolled in the district for the year, which is how we're paid. But yes, it will have an impact on funding next year. So we'll begin to calculate that into as, when we talk to you next March and do Budget 101 and get going on budget. You'll, you'll see that reflected in the numbers then.
Thank you. So then what's, what happened with the current staffing now that we over projected?
So with the current staffing, what you'll find is we make adjustments from year to year, right? So where we had enrollment bubbles this year, we ended up transferring teachers from one school to another to solve those bubbles. In years where we look at that projection and actually we've done better than what we thought, we might add staff. So we didn't, we didn't do any additional hiring this year per se in our classrooms. But we, we moved some teachers around because of, it was deeper than we thought it would be.
Thank you. Then that means that we're gonna have to review the staffing allocation methodology this year then.
Well, that and know that every year when we prepare for budget, we take the enrollment that we will get not only this information that Robert has provided, but his next year's projection. And we'll run that through that kind of sausage maker of the SAM and it'll tell us how many staff we need. On a, in a typically year, it doesn't put us in a RIF situation. We have a number of retirements that happen. So those folks leave the system and we just don't hire for them. So we'll account for that. Loss of enrollment, both on the SAM side and on the revenue side in numbers you see in the spring.
So Mike, for this year, it was roughly ninety teachers?
For, for this current year?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, we, we did not, we had about ninety leave, but we also hired some. What came out of the system was based on a reduction of seven hundred students, with seven hundred and change students that Robert had projected. So we put those same numbers that he projects into our model, run the model, and it tells us how many teachers we allocate to each school, if that makes sense. So it will account for the enrollment reduction as we build the model for next year's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. I have one question. How do you, you know, the budget impact is very, you know, it's direct. Enrollment goes down, we get less funding. That's, but then, then there are pockets where there is an increase, like early college went by twelve percent, charter schools are going up. How do you use that in your planning? Do we, are we going to have more charter schools? Is it used, first of all? Is this information used for future planning?
Yes. I mean, we, we account for our charters. We estimate how many students are going to be at that charter. We, we send those dollars, I think it's eighty-five cents on every dollar that we receive, out to those charter schools. So on the revenue side, we, we project that that money's coming in. And on the expenditure side, we project it's going out. If it's plus or minus, we have to true that up in the year that we're in.
Let me ask. Thank you. Thank you for that information. That, that budget, budget funding is very direct and we can see that. But in a bigger scale, like what we are seeing is that there is a demand for this. Do you use that in the planning for future? When we create new schools, do we have maybe an ISP section in a different school? Or have early college, you know, more access for the students to go for early college? Because there is a need for it. There is a waiting list in ISP or in base. Are we, are we trying to create a district that would cater to the needs of what parents are asking? Do we use that in planning?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I think we are considering what programs people want. I think the superintendent has mentioned CTE alignment with our community in the past. We've talked about different options we can provide. What we're careful of is, you know, things like early college, are we, are we losing our own kids to our own programs, right? Like have we just moved them from one school to another now, to a different program? Or are we, are we bringing in new students because of it? So.
So how does the early college work? Sorry. How does the early college work? Do we get the funding for those kids who go to early college or is that the?
We do.
We do get?
We do. And then we turn around and pay the community college for that.
Okay.
The one thing you need to look at is regarding programming is the way the programming has been historically here. We have, for example, base off one eighty-fifth. That's hard for kids that live in the Montclair area to build access. You know, and typically what you want to do in a master plan is you want to have more of a, like a, like a wheel and spokes type of program where the academic program core, the magnet programs are toward the middle of a school site. So it's more equitable for access across the system our size. Or you have hubs possibly, like I think you were talking about hub model, where you have maybe a ISP North, ISP South or a base North, base South type of structure where provided more regional access for programming. I think that's what Shelley is working on with Stafford and the rest of staff regarding what to do with CTE programs.
His, his way of teaching, you know, where he caters to a lot more students. So, well, thank you. Thank you for that. Anybody else has any questions? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you so much Chair Garg, Directors, Student Representatives and Dr. Valderras. We are pleased to be here with you this evening to present the Division twenty-two standard assurance. For compliance, you'll notice that it says the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we'll talk about that just in just a moment. Shelley Reggiani, Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. And this evening, I am joined by Jill O'Neill, Executive Administrator for Teaching and Learning. And Jill also oversees all of our option programs. We're also joined by Veronica Galvan, all the way far right of my end, Curriculum and Instruction Administrator. And then Kristy House is here this evening, and she is our Accountability Specialist who serves the district and she works with us in teaching and learning. And this evening, we, it is our pleasure to be talking to you about the assurances from last school year.
Yes, please.
Good evening. As Dr. Reggiani mentioned, we are preparing, we're presenting the required Division twenty-two report for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Why are we reporting about last year? Well, we report in the fall in order to report accurate information about the prior school year. There are some rules for which we can't say we were compliant until the school year actually concludes. For example, one of the areas is meeting instructional time requirements. Although we plan our school schedules and calendars to meet compliance standards, it's possible that the weather or other circumstances might cause us to not meet the standards. While this report focuses on the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we use this report as an opportunity to review requirements for this current school year to ensure that we're meeting compliance requirements or that we have a plan on how we will correct any areas of non-compliance. So what are the Division twenty-two standards? They are the requirements for districts that we must adhere to. They ensure that every student in Oregon public schools is provided a level of, of service that meets the standards set by the state. This promotes educational equity for students across Oregon and in the Beaverton School District. The standards in the Division twenty-two rules promote educational equity. It guarantees that all students are provided with a baseline level of opportunity and support. Now, Kristy House will share information about the categories and rules within Division twenty-two.
Division twenty-two includes over fifty individual rules. These are organized into five categories that align with Oregon's priorities for student success as outlined in the reimagined accountability framework. That's linked in the bottom of the slide if you want to reference. These categories are high-quality learning experiences for all students, aligned and focused education systems, engaged partners and communities, safe and inclusive schools, and committed and supported staff. Here are a few examples from each category. These are just highlights, not a complete list. High-quality learning experiences includes fourteen rules. Topics range from diploma requirements to instructional materials and physical education. Aligned and focused educational systems includes seventeen rules. These cover instructional time, comprehensive school counseling, and administration of state assessments. Engaged partners and communities includes six rules. These focus on complaint procedures and educational equity advisory committees. Safe and inclusive schools includes sixteen rules. Topics include substance use prevention, health services, and the Every Student Belongs guidelines. Committed and supported staff includes four rules. These address personnel, teaching standards, and evaluation and support for educators. For more details about each rule, you'll find links in the compliance report that's in your packet.
So what are the Division twenty-two standard assurances? That's just the report we're making tonight, ensuring that the district reviewed each of the, each of the rules. And we determined whether we were in compliance or out of compliance. This report we're making tonight is required by state law. The district must present the report at a public board meeting and then we'll post it on the district website and submit assurances to the Oregon Department of Education. It's a shared responsibility between the school district, local school boards, and ODE to ensure quality education for all students. This system promotes reciprocal accountability and transparency. For each rule, the district reviews the requirements and determines whether we were in compliance. If we were not, we submit an explanation and the corrective action plan to ODE. And that information is in your packet. Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Compliance for twenty-four, twenty-five, remember this is for last year. We were in compliance in fifty-five of the fifty-seven standards. Two standards, corrective actions were, one was the middle school PE minutes. And the other one was around instructional materials adoption. What we did as a corrective action was changed the middle school physical education minutes has been, they have already been made for this school year. And now we will be in compliance next year. So next year when we present, we'll say that we are in compliance based on this year. The instructional materials adoption is on schedule and will be completed by twenty twenty-seven. And we submitted an updated corrective action plan in October of twenty twenty-three. So we've been working through that. What are the next steps? The report on compliance will, with, with public school standards will be posted on the district website by November first. We will submit assurances to ODE no later than November fifteenth. As mentioned earlier, for each rule, for each rule, we certify whether we were or we were, we were in or out of compliance. Once ODE receives our submission, they will review it and follow up on any items we identified as being out of compliance. And we will continue to monitor updated requirements to ensure we remain in compliance for future school years. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Dr. Perez?
I think the, the one that, the adoption piece, I think we've, it'll be good to see what ODE does as they are trying to slow down that adoption process. It's really hard on districts financially, but also on staff to have to keep up with such a, with the schedule that they have in place. So that's, we'll see what happens in the next year. So as they're looking at modifying that and slowing it down a bit to kind of release some of the pressure on districts for that. So looking forward to seeing what they do with that.
Dr. Potter?
Reading the, reading the report and seeing the slides, the fact that there is almost all of our slides except for the two that you, or the components, except for the two that you mentioned. And there seems to be a very good plan to be able to address those. The fact that we say not applicable for corrective measures is an enormous amount of work on the team. Not all districts get to say that and report that. So we're really lucky to have such a dedicated group of staff who are willing to, some of this is tedious to document and measure, but it really does get at learning gains of students and the learning experiences and learning outcomes for our students. So thank you, because I think that's an enormous amount of work for our staff and something to celebrate. And then I, I also wanted just to hear briefly, if you had any insights on ODE, the new bill, the new accountability bill. There in different conversations, we hear the new accountability bill will reduce the amount of reporting. And the formative requirements in the accountability bill will increase Division twenty-two. Do you have a sense of where your team sits in that complicated conversation? And then do you have any advice for advocacy that we can do at the state level for helping the team narrow the accountability reporting requirements, but still focus on the needs of student learning?
Thank you, Dr. Potter. I think you point out the dichotomy of goals of that student accountability bill. With Division twenty-two, by December twenty twenty-six, ODE needs to make a report to the legislature on their recommendations for findings on how they could streamline Division twenty-two reporting. For now, you saw changes in the presentation where they've developed the buckets of reporting. That's the change that we've seen so far. We really don't think we'll see changes in reporting until twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight or beyond for Division twenty-two. We haven't seen what changes will come with the integrative program reporting, which is the other side of that bill with interim assessments. And I think as a large district, we are fortunate that we have dedicated staff for accountability who can do this work. And I think the burden on our other districts throughout the state is worth advocating for, for our small districts that don't have the resources that we do in terms of staff.
Dr. Chong?
I want to, I would like to echo Dr. Potter saying about how wonderful our team is in doing all this work. Because people watching this probably have no idea what every single of these items require. So congratulations and thank you for your hard work and the team hard work. You know, like, it's just, there's a lot of these things unfunded mended, right? We don't talk about it, but we are meeting all the requirements. It's just, for example, talent gifted, right? And there's, I can list, I can look at this because I know I'm aware of this. I can just tell you like half of these are unfunded. Or when, even when they're funded, it's still at the minimum cost. So congratulations and thank you so much for all your work. And thank you all the staff who has implemented work as well. So a big congrats to also superintendent for such a great job as well to leading where we are today. So, thank you. My, so as Dr. Potter was talking about the SB one forty-one, the big SB one forty-one. they have a, they have a timeline, and the thing that's difficult about this is that even though they have a timeline, I don't think ODE really have nailed down what they really want to do. Or the guideline is by 2027, 28, that's when the implementation actually really start. And so there's going to be a 26, 27, still like studying or working with all the school district. So this is the part where we as the board members would love to have your recommendation or your input on what can be done to help with the competition within the year. So, because this is, this is huge. So, thank you.
I recognize the gravity, and thank you also for noting. I know that in your past work, you have done Division 22 work. So the, the acknowledgement of the work of the staff is appreciated deeply. The gravity upon districts when something else is added, it's not that it's wrong that it's added, those are assurances for our students, and we must have those critical assurances that we're providing the service to students. I think the place of advocacy, and this gets to both Dr. Trong's question and Dr. Potter's question a little bit more deeply, where our district, as well as our partner districts, could use the support, encouraging ODE and continuing to ask our state, engage with districts. Engage with districts on what this impact will look like. How can we collect this? What can that collection look like? What is the impact on a district that is the size of Beaverton? Or a district that is significantly smaller, someplace else in the state? All of us have the exact same requirement. So when the state can lean in longer and lean in more deeply in hearing the experiences of schools, I think that they are going to in turn make better decisions that impact us and all of our students. Sometimes those feedback windows are tight, because the legislature requires a tight turnaround. That's another place where we can ask, slow down the process, ask more questions, go a little bit deeper so that we can have stronger solutions for our districts, regardless of their size.
We'll try. Thank you. Director Kossen?
Thank you again for the presentation. I obviously echo a lot of what was already shared. Thank you for all the work. Just a quick clarifying question, I think it's obvious, but I wanted to make sure anyone listening. This is all self-reported. Is there any audit or anything outside of the reporting that you have to do for actions that, you know, might be missing?
So if we report for multiple years that we are not in compliance, then ODE would come and help us provide a better plan. But in this case, we've provided them with a plan that we are continuing to follow, so they have no intervention. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else has any questions? So I just had a question, a clarifying question. There, everything is in compliance, so I have no questions. Congratulations to you guys for great work, and you're implementing the two things that needed implementation for improved corrective action. There were two that were like waved through the end of 27, 28, the assessment of essential skills diploma requirements, and the essential skills assessment for English language learners. Is there anything right now, like, that you can compare our status with, or no?
Can you expand a little bit? Compare our status against?
So are we in compliance, because it says waved through, right? So that means that are we not even looking at it, or?
So those requirements are waived across the district. That format that you saw, those words are exactly what ODE told me to write. But in terms of are we measuring our students' skills before graduation? Yes, there are some assessments. Are we measuring our English learner's proficiency? Yes, we have assessments for that, and we can compare that to previous years.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Trong?
Just for my information, have the district has any OCR violations of, like, for the EL department? Like, I'm just going to give you an example, like, yeah, BPS had like hundreds.
Offices of civil rights?
Offices of civil rights, yeah, OCR.
No.
Offices of rights.
No.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have financial update by Mike Schofield.
I don't think there's going to be a department anytime soon. So, joke, 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 bad joke.
Good evening, School Board. Thank you for the time this evening. I, I do want to make sure, based on the previous presentation on enrollment, that, that we're clear on how these things tie. So it was shared that our enrollment decline was projected at seven hundred students. We used that same number last spring. So when you think about that, we pulled about twenty-five to somewhere between twenty and twenty-seven teachers probably out of the system and allocated based on that enrollment. What happened was, it's actually about three hundred students less than that right now, at this point. We have not, we did not, we're not in a position as a district because of the reserves we have, because of where we are financially, to say at the start of school this year, when we were down another three hundred, we weren't saying, we've got to combine classrooms and, and we've got to lay people off, right? Like, we're able to absorb that during this school year. We'll make modifications again next year as we build the budget next year, based on our reality for this year and our projection for next year. Does that make sense? So we're, we're, we're in alignment with what happens. It's just an iterative process as we go through. Does that help? Okay. Financials, we have the financials for you. I, I won't spend a ton of time on it, because this is our first report for the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and we had like one month of payroll. So we don't have a lot of changes to the forecast. It's pretty much just aligned to budget. When you do look at our general fund activity and forecast, you're going to see a new format this time around that we've shared with you. So if you look at this page, it's in a format that between our budget manager and our finance manager and myself, we sat down and said, we want to make this thing make a little more sense to you and, and a little more presentable format. So the first three columns, we give you kind of what we've spent, what we have encumbered, what the combined total is. Then you see kind of that brownish column, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. That's the budget that you adopted last June. And then right next to that, we put the year in forecast. And then we're going to show a variance to that forecast. There's currently no variance, because again, we had one month of data, essentially, one month of payroll there. But you'll start to see those variances right next to each other. If this causes you discomfort, because you've looked at this forecast every month prior to that, if you turn the page, I have the old format as well. So if that gives you greater comfort to look at the old format, that's fine, too. We're going to, we're going to try to steadily make some improvements as we go through this year, add some graphics to this, kind of what we expect to see, and just present this data in, in a little more meaningful way to you as we go throughout the year. So give me any feedback you have about this. We don't need to do it in the board meeting, but if you look at something and say, well, why'd you do that? Just reach out, shoot me an email, and we'll modify and adjust as we go along and learn a little bit about what you'd really like to see as we go along. So that's that. You got the class size report, the investment report, all the usual suspects are in there. So hopefully, hopefully, if you've got any questions, we can handle those today. As Dr. Valderras mentioned, he kind of stole my thunder. ODE has both talked about reductions that they're going to make, or the state of Oregon has talked about reductions that could be made at the department level in the current year right now. The governor said, we're going to get savings right now. And she's also asked legislative fiscal to ask departments what it might look like to make reductions to the state school fund moving forward, so that legislators can look at that in the short session. So we'll, we'll follow it closely. I don't expect a lot of discussion about it until that short, short session occurs. And again, as Dr. Valderras mentioned, right before the Thanksgiving break, we'll get another forecast, and that'll tell us something. Remember, the last forecast suggested that we do kind of this hockey stick approach, where we'd go down for a little while, and then we'd bounce back up in, in the next calendar year. We'll see, right? We'll keep an eye on it. Any questions?
There has been previous governors in the past that have had us adjust for, after every forecast. And that is very, very painful. So, very painful.
Yeah, for those of you that haven't been through the bad old days, every time a forecast came out, the governor would call the legislature into special session. They would make reductions to all kinds of areas in the state government, including the state school fund. We would then make those, we would then have to cut accordingly. And you know as well as I do, that in a, a school where we like stability, and you know, we like to keep those expectations, where we start the school year, we kind of want to end that way, and you get out into March, and you have a forecast, and they're saying you're going to cut your budget, and you know, three quarters of your spending is out the door already. So reductions at that time of year are especially difficult, and those decisions get harder and harder. So the, I, I hope that's not where we're headed. I hope we're, have a little more sustainable path. It will be interesting, because the state does have both a rainy day reserve for the state and an ed stability fund, and there's significant reserves there. It'll be interesting to see what they decide to do about that, right? At what point does, at what point does the economy start to tilt enough that they say, we, we should look at, at using some of those dollars? They do have them. I don't know that they have a specific criteria than the number of votes it takes to, to tap that fund. So that'll be an interesting thing to watch for as the short session comes into play.
Anybody has questions?
Is your staffing allocation adjustments you were doing last month when we talked, is that finalized now? Or is that still going on?
We, we are doing some work in some specialized programs a little bit. But generally, the generalized classrooms, we haven't made an adjustment in a few weeks.
But are you looking into it, or no? No?
No.
Okay. Thank.
Thank you.
Those adjustments are typically made the first two or three weeks of school. And most systems, it actually be written high functioning that way. We, we, we get them very, very quickly, what we're going to do. We don't want to move kids three, four, or five weeks into the system.
Too late into the year, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And especially at the high school level, once the, once school is started and that schedule is set, it's really tough for them to either add or subtract at that point, because it just messes with their schedules and makes it difficult. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda.
And just to clarify, I think, Dr. Carpenter, you're pulling public contract authorization Beaverton High School baseball softball turf. So I move to approve the consent agenda minus the public contract authorization Beaverton High School baseball softball turf, as proposed by Dr. Carpenter. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Did you second it, Dr. Carpenter?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion on that? Can we vote to move the agenda forward, the motion? Everybody saying, approving, say, raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
All seven agreed, so we'll move that, and now we can have the other agenda item.
I move to approve board policies, policy revisions JFCEB, personal communication devices JOA directory. Oh, we need turf, sorry. Do you want to move? Oh, wait. I, I move, I make a motion to approve the public contract authorization Beaverton High School baseball turf, baseball softball turf. Is there a second?
Back in.
Just a second.
Just a second did it, okay. Everybody in agreement to move this agenda item forward, please raise your hand and say yes?
What, discussion?
Discussion, discussion.
Yeah, I, I continue to have concerns about our student safety. Orthopedic injuries are high on turf fields. The National Football League Players Association is trying to move back to natural grass because of the orthopedic injuries, the inhalation of microplastics from playing on these surfaces, and the potential environmental impact of runoff, water runoff of these. So same thing I always say, and in Casey, I, I appreciate that you have looked into this, so I'm happy to move on. I'd just like to state for the record my concerns. Appreciate all you. Thanks.
Okay, if there is no changes, let's take a vote. Casey, would you like to say anything, or you're good? Karen?
And just to clarify, we, Dr. Valderras or Casey, we haven't had injuries specifically based on turf usage, or because we have turf?
I, I'm not aware of any specifically related to that. I, I can't answer that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Everybody in, in agreement to move this agenda item forward, please raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
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 So six approved. Anybody who's saying no?
No.
Dr. Carpenter, one no and six yes, so this agenda item moves forward. Thank you.
Now do I make a motion?
No.
Okay, I do.
Next up, we have items for action, contract authorizations that we did, right? Now board policy revisions.
So I, I move to approve board policy revisions JFCEB, personal communication devices, JOA directory information, JHFA supervision of students, and JN student fees. Justice, do you second?
Second.
Everybody in agree, oh, discussion? Anybody has any questions? Okay, everybody in agreement of these board policy revisions, please raise your hand and say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All seven are in agreement, so the board policy revisions are done. Let's move to the next item, and Carrie is here for that. Items for action at a future meeting, board goals.
All right, so as the board will recall, about six weeks ago, in your retreat, you held a discussion around board goals for the year. And the consensus of the board was to establish four goals: superintendent selection, sustainable budget, board development, and legislative advocacy. There was board discussion around these goals and what you wanted to accomplish. And then the, the next step was to have staff come back with articulated goals that you could review and approve, that that is what you want to establish for yourself as goals. These are laid out in the information sheet in the board packet with just a little description of each of those. The board members have had a chance to review. And if the board has any discussion or comments about it, they could be revised. Otherwise, they will come back as it is for approval at your next board meeting.
Anybody, discussion, we can have any? Dr. Perez?
Just wondering what we're going to use as our measure of success? So is it just, yeah, we did it? Or, and it, maybe at a future time, or maybe in another retreat, or we can talk about what will be, what will we call success for, for a con? Well, the first one's easy. Do we have a superintendent? Yes, or no? But for the other ones, what does sustainable budget mean, or, or development effectiveness?
Anybody has any suggestions?
If anything, I would ask the board leadership to create a subcommittee to work on something drafted prior to any board retreat, future board retreat, if it's mid-year, that way the board, the whole board has ample time to weigh in.
Yes. We could do that. Okay. So our next item, we have to give you for the next meeting, something, right? For at least, if you're going to take up these board goals.
These board goals were orally decided on the, conceptually, in the retreat. But the board does take action to approve your goals for the year. So if there's thinking about revisions to these goals as drafted, if there's any questions or concerns about them, now would be a time to discuss that. Or in the next meeting, the board wouldn't take action on approving these goals, saying, yes, this is what we want to have established as our goals for the year until next. to have established as our goals for the year until next board meeting. But conceptually, the board, uh, was in consensus that these were the four areas of goals.
Do we want to have a discussion right now or do you want to send your, um, concerns maybe in an email? And then the leadership could look at it and then we can decide, do we, how we want to move forward about it.
I would recommend again that the, maybe the board, um, gather information to leadership. But you have to, I would also strongly recommend the discussion happen in public at the next board meeting. So the board can kind of win, but at least board leadership has an understanding of what, uh, uh, the questions concerned revisions that maybe had to, uh, lead to the discussion, to help facilitate the discussion. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, let's, let's do that then. Okay. Let's move to the board operating agreements.
This is a second follow-up from that discussion several weeks ago, uh, about six weeks ago in the board's retreat, where you reviewed the operating agreements that the board, uh, agrees to work under. Um, the, uh, in addition to things that are established by law and policy, these, these operating agreements cover some of the, the working agreements for how the board works with each other and, uh, and with staff. So there were a few areas of suggested updates, uh, in which there was consensus or majority interest appearing to be, uh, the case from the board. And have been discussed and worked into this in draft form, um, including, uh, a little nuance of providing as much advance notice as possible if a board member is not able to attend a meeting with the understanding that it, it, it changes the staff support needs if a board member is virtual. Uh, some adjustment and clarification around the, uh, items about using Robert's Rules of Order as the board's parliamentary procedure, uh, and clarifying that the board chair has the discretion to extend the discussion or the, uh, the board can as a whole. This is one where if you follow, um, the established Robert rules, uh, Robert's Rules of Order to the T, uh, I believe it requires a two-thirds vote to extend this discussion, which, um, on a board of seven is, uh, not a simple majority. But I believe it needs, needs five out of seven votes to extend. But the board discussed, uh, in the retreat, just giving the nod to it either by the board chair or by a simple majority, uh, agreement of the board. There was a mention of, uh, not surprising the board and the staff with, uh, questions. If you know you're going to ask a question, it's helpful to, um, communicate directly in advance. Or if you have a concern, communicate directly in advance. But that could be through the board Q and A system and/or through direct contact to the board and superintendent. And there is some, uh, language trying to clarify what to do when an email has been sent to all board members and what to do when, it's not quite clear whether an email has been sent to all board members, but appear, it appears that it may be. So these were the, the few areas where there was board discussion in the retreat around making some adjustments to these, uh, operating procedures or operating agreements. Um, there were none that were look, that the board was looking to strike from the agreement and no major changes that were discussed.
Does anybody have any question or suggestions? Um, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Carpenter.
Thank you. Um, I want to echo, um, BEA president's comment about, uh, visits to schools and, um, feel, share the concern about how disruptive, um, board member visits can be. Um, and the curiosity I have is, um, is, you know, a superintendent, the only chaperone that we can have? And, um, is a union member, a union leader who does school visits, um, to individual schools. Could that be a person who is able to bring a board member in without creating this unnecessary disruption? And so, um, what I've experienced on school visits that, um, the superintendent is, you know, with is they, they're very curated and it doesn't feel like an authentic experience of, that I'm looking for in visiting a school. So, um, curious about, um, wanting to minimize disruption to the school environment while also being able to visit in a way that feels more authentic. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a response or have a suggestion on that?
Um, I, I don't have a response to that, but I, uh, believe that, you know, if we want to have, um, the authentic experience, um, I certainly think that when we, when in a teacher has invited us, a school invites us to come in, that they have a specific perspective that they want to share with us. Correct. So then that, I think we, I stand as we have one employee is a superintendent, but we do want to hear the voice of the teachers. Therefore, we have many ways of it for the teachers to also share with us how, um, the classrooms are. We have opportunity to that instead of just also just going to the classroom. So I still stand that I believe that, um, even though we can ask this, we can ask the superintendent to give us a visit that is not curated, but I believe that I still need to go through the superintendent.
Perez? Um, I guess from my perspective of visiting schools, I have, I think in every, um, experience that I've had in schools, they've, the principal has actually asked me like, where do you want to see? Where do you want to go? Um, they, so I feel, I, I've experienced in my visits, the opportunity to say like, I'm really curious about, you know, CTE or I'm really curious about, um, your English language learners. Or I'm really curious about, you know, whatever I'm curious about. Um, and I've looked at like the, because I've had a chance to meet one-on-one with each of the, the schools, um, during our, um, what is that called? The showcase, um, I get to see a lot of the school improvement plans and, and see what they're aiming at. So I feel very comfortable like when I go into the school at that point to say like, think about their school improvement plan. And like, hey, I, I'm really curious about in your school improvement plan, you had focused on early literacy. So I'm wondering about this or I'm wondering about your special education classrooms. And so in my experience, I've been able to just ask questions and then depending on how much time I have from work, I've been able to spend, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour walking around the school. So I haven't felt restricted myself, um, in talking to people. I know teachers are teaching, so that's kind of, you know, challenging. They've all, all been very friendly and come up and said hello. Um, in, in advance, the teacher, the principal, they've said, had let them know like, hey, we have school board members coming tomorrow or today even in the morning. So, um, I also, with having kids in school, I get to go to a lot of school events. So I feel like I can see my kids' schools there. And then, um, I've had students invite me to different events. So, um, I can, I've been able to visit schools in different ways. And we also have the passes to go see the sports. And so I've been able to do that. And then we've been invited to, um, go to different arts, um, presentations or plays and things like that. So I know those are available and, um, I couldn't make the, um, event at my own kid's school around, um, suicide prevention and that training for parents. So I was able to go to a different school. Um, and it, I also was curious about what would be the experience of the parents that were learning about this in Spanish. So I was able to go to a different school and attend one session in Spanish. So I, um, I'm just speaking for one board member. Um, I haven't had that experience of curated or they were planning something very specific. And I did have kids invite me in and talk about like my, our playground's not accessible to a student in our classroom and present to me, um, and that was in my zone. Um, and so, yeah, I just wanted to share one perspective.
Dr. Potter?
Uh, as somebody who's taught in Beaverton and I go into classrooms in my day job hat, I feel like my school visits have mirrored authentic experiences. Um, I don't think that, I don't feel like they've been canned. I've appreciated the opportunity to ask really complicated nuanced questions of school leadership and then also staff. A lot of our school leaders will invite their staff into those spaces during the school visits. And so we can ask teachers direct questions about complicated things that we're talking about here in public and kind of peel back the layers of the onion to learn more in a way that, um, is, uh, more comfortable to just get more information. So, and then on the flip side, our, our role as our support of our superintendent, Dr. Valderras, if we gather any information that would help us with the business of the school district, the staff member who needs to hear that information the most is Dr. Valderras. So if we hear anything that would be beneficial to help us with the business of the school district, Dr. Valderras should be there to hear it so that he can be the one who implements it and acts on it. So as, um, when we're out hearing information about how the schools are run, we should be in partnership with the employee who we work with to be able to implement changes or see impacts of decisions that we're making here in this space. And I've felt very welcomed with all of our passes and invitations to plays and celebrations within our school district. Um, I haven't felt restricted in that way at all. If I do get an invite, I have occasionally said, I'm headed to so-and-so school just to head that, but it's not been, um, but that's been for a play or something like that. That is maybe not of, of my kids' experience. So again, one perspective.
Director Carson?
Um, thank you for sharing again. Fully acknowledging that I am one of the newer board members and may not have the depth of experience that my esteemed colleagues have. Um, I did want to acknowledge the, the reality of dynamics, especially power dynamics that come into play in terms of when we show up in different places and spaces. Uh, I know we have talked as a board about, right, like, hey, if you're a, a parent with, you know, kids in the school, but also a board, sitting board member, when you show up, it's not that easy to just take off the board hat and just be a parent. And obviously we try to embody the, the balance that's necessary. But I, I do think it's important to recognize the dynamics that, that manifest. Um, again, depending on who is showing up, how they're showing up. And it's important from, from the authenticity point that was mentioned earlier that we are cultivating safe spaces for people to be able to engage with us meaningfully. And that safe space really does mean, hey, we, we are here to listen, we are here to engage meaningfully and thoughtfully so that we can do better, so we can address and understand and, and deeply engage at a, at that level that's necessary and warranted as it, our district continues to evolve, as the needs of the community continue to change. So in order to make people feel heard, we have to create that type of safe space. And that's really where I think a, a lot of it echoes for me in terms of how do we make that experience more authentic and less curated and orchestrated? And it, it isn't one way or the other extreme. I think we need to find a more balanced approach to it and not just mitigate it to everything is fine. There is, I think personally, again, one board member's opinion, there is a room to do better so that people feel like they're involved, they're invested and they're being heard where they are and that we are able to go in and engage meaningfully. I'm not sure if I have the answer of what that looks like, but I'm hoping we can move in that direction. Thank you.
And I think, uh, a clarification I had, um, I think one of the, the statements that was made and I don't know, um, I can't remember. When I think about when, um, the union like Katie and, and the team go in to visit our schools and talk to our staff, um, there's usually a purpose, right? Like they're trying to hear from staff and it should be a safe space where they, staff can share with them what's going well, what are the bumps, um, and they're there in their union role. And they have, our staff has union rights to be able to talk to, um, the union in that way. And I think in my, my perspective would be by a board member sitting in on those conversations and hearing those pieces. That's not our role in the sense that they're speaking to their union. Um, they're speaking to, that's like, to me, that's a private space where they're sharing what they need from their union. That wouldn't necessarily, in my perspective, be a role that a board member would be holding. Um, if there is an issue there, then, you know, Katie and, and our union would, and the staff can go to HR and, and talk to our HR department. That's the connection, right? Like, um, we do represent our staff and we do represent our community, um, but we aren't HR. And so, um, when pieces come to us about our staff having, you know, facing an issue that needs to be solved, I can't solve it, but I can connect them to Dr. Valderras or say, hey, there's this issue that's happening. He can talk to Katie, the union, talk to HR and then they solve it because that's not our role. Um, but yes, we can be supportive of, of our staff. That's definitely, um, why we're here as well. And we're here to look at the system. What's the issue with the system? Is there something broken in that the, um, in the system? But we aren't, our role is not to solve a family's issue or a staff member's issue or an HR issue. That's HR or Dr. Valderras is, um, and his staff that need to solve those pieces. It's not that I don't care or that we don't care, I think, as board, but that's not our role. So I just wanted to name that, um, and, and think about like where, where's our role in, in visiting schools? And it really is in building our understanding of what's happening. Um, it's in the day-to-day, not just in my kid's school, but all of our schools so that we can make the best educated decisions for funding, for, um, curriculum as our roles sets, you know, puts forth. So I just wanted to state that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Carpenter?
Thank you. Um, I agree actually, um, that it would be inappropriate to be brought in, um, by Katie and Troy, um, to solve an HR issue or any other issue. Um, and I, I guess I'd be surprised if, if that, if we, they wanted us to be a part of that. Um, I guess where I was thinking about how it would look to have, yes, be chaperoned, um, but it would be a way for, um, union leadership to, um, have their members, um, have a connection with school board members and have a voice. And I think some of, like, my thinking when I first came on the board, there was, part of our board working agreements was, um, a little bit confusing, I think, to a lot of people, including myself, that, um, it kind of sounded like teachers were not allowed to directly engage with school board members. And I, I certainly feel like we worked through so that I didn't feel like that was the case. And I still wonder like if teachers feel like they do have a connection with school board members or a way to connect in ways that are meaningful to them. Um, and it isn't necessarily an attempt to circumvent the hierarchy and the, and the proper protocols, but more that, um, you know, as an elected member of this school district, you know, I represent, you know, all of them. And so to be able to be in the schools and have, um, uh, the opportunity for them to like talk to me about stuff, me to ask them about, uh, questions about stuff, um, feels like, um, for me, a meaningful way to engage with our, um, with our educators. So, um, you know, it isn't necessarily, you know, wanting to solve problems or even hear about problems, but more just like a, a meaningful engagement with, um, with our unions and our, and our educators. And so that's where I, my head is when I'm thinking about wanting to have that, um, less curated. And I guess, um, maybe that isn't, you know, the right terminology, but it's more, um, uh, uh, an ability to engage on a meaningful level with our educators is, is sort of where my head goes. Thank you.
Dr. Tron?
Um, thank you, Dr. Carpenter. My, I'm just curious on, because, you know, I haven't been in this room for long and, um, most of the process in the district, I know, uh, people always go through the superintendent. Just to protect, uh, you know, all of us and also to give the teachers equal opportunities because not all teachers can request, uh, us to come into their classroom. Uh, my, um, question is really about when you get that information, when you go see the teachers, then what do you do with those information?
Can I speak again? Um, I think that what I, how I have been as a, a board member for two plus years is that I meet with families and I meet with teachers outside of school primarily. Um, I've had town halls and I have coffee chats. And I, um, bring all of the information that I learn into my role sitting here. And so I feel very well in. And so I feel very well-informed on many issues, not all, I, you know, certainly not all. But I feel like those conversations at a town hall, running into a teacher at the grocery store, and the teacher in the grocery store might even have a problem, and I can recommend, oh, you know, you know, follow the proper chain of command. And it can inform how I think about issues that are presented to us at the board. So I don't insert myself, and I think it gives me a better understanding, a good start, if you will, of how the district is doing. When I hear from the community, I hear from parents, I hear from students. I heard from a student just, just this past week, and, you know, I've, I forwarded it to Dr. Balderas. And, and it, you know, is creating an opportunity for me to be curious about some things in the district. So I think it's a way for me to meaningfully engage in the decisions that we are expected to make because I'm hearing from so many different people. So that's how I use that information.
Thank you. I, I'm just, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Director Raji?
I mean, I, I, I think I would just like to bring us back to the operating agreement as a process document that was governing our, like, shared agreement with the superintendent, but also as our interface into the district. So to get this conversation around practice and, like, if either, if there's either language recommendation to modify that section of the agreement around visits, if we had to have a, get a subcommittee to have a conversation, to give some recommendations of what could be different to make it, I guess, more expansive. My concern would be if we are going to put in our operating meeting with the superintendent, actions and behaviors for people who are not the superintendent, is how would we manage those people being available on whatever schedules we're talking about? Is this a suggestion that the superintendent would not be involved in that conversation or transferred to someplace else in the administration? Like, I think, I, I, I think I understand the overall sentiment around the conversation with buildings and interacting with people, and that was subject in our early, in, in the prior discussions around the operating agreements. I, I just, I don't, I, I, I think if, if the goal is, I, I think, one, if there's a suggestion to how to change what we're, what we're saying we're going to agree to do when we're trying to interact with the district, then we should get to that language and a process to get to that language, or rather, or a process to get to that language. I think, you know, I, I feel like in the moment, we're sort of having a conversation around some things while not, by trying not to have a conversation around some things, which doesn't actually help us get to process that we're going to be able to sustainably live within and do. So I'm open for a discussion or a process, a subset of folks to sit down and have a conversation and bring something back to the board because, again, we don't, we're, this is a item for future action, to make a decision about the operating agreement. If it takes a couple more meetings to get to an agreement that we all see as fit, that's fine with me. I, I just think in, in the interest of us doing the work, like, some process to recommend some of the changes to it. And otherwise, there, there's not a, yeah, I don't want to, like, go off into the weeds on these, these other sort of implications that have come up for my own well-being because I don't, I don't know that it serves the thing that we're concerned most about. The people who have the most authentic experience in our schools are our kids. They have the most authentic experience of everybody here. I mean, all the adults, whatever your role, wherever you show up, but in this process, the kids have the most authentic experience. So anything else, to me, gets into, I don't know if we're doing the thing that we think we're doing. And I would be fearful that we're missing something. So in terms of our operating agreements to engage with the superintendent, if it, if it sounds, it sounds like we should have a conversation or some subsets to have a conversation to think about what, what would we change in the language? And then again, if it, this is going to involve people other than the superintendent, how do we administer that in our role as a board? And that's, then that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Raji. The point that, that we would look into would be the visit to schools A, and maybe looks like we have heard from everybody on that point. If there is a suggestion to change the language, maybe you can send it to Kerry and the leadership, and then we can look into that. But I would like to give my personal opinion on it because I have visited schools almost one every month, and my personal experience was that I got a lot of information, and I got an opportunity to go to schools that I may not have gone on my own because they were schools outside my zone. My experience, I felt I got a lot of information by, and, and the way it is written right now, it's not that we have to, we just have to notify the superintendent's office and let them help us, you know, make the visit. So I feel personally confident, comfortable with this language, but we, we, people can send in their suggestions. There is one point that I would like to bring, that's communication with public, point H. Right now, it says, "Board members will not seek to resolve operational questions, complaints or requests for action that are conveyed to them," which I totally agree. They will acknowledge receipt and relay them to the superintendent for follow-up. And just if we can add a sentence that the board member or whoever is asking would get a closed loop, you know, find out how that question was resolved, or whether it was resolved and what happened so that, because I can understand the superintendent is responsible for the operational work, but board, when the question comes to them, they should also know how it was handled. So if we can have something to that, you know, that how that email was handled, that would be my personal question, suggestion on the change. If anybody else has a question, Dr. Perez?
I think I would appreciate a loop back, like, hey, we, we took care of it or we talked. I don't know if they'll be able to give us all the details because some of those things, the way that they're resolved are private for families, or, you know, might be. So I, I think that, I feel, I don't have any other changes from our last discussion, but for this one, I think just having an acknowledgement that, yeah, staff connected with the family or something, or just so that we know we're not solving an issue, but I think that would be helpful. But maybe not, we may not have all the details back, but.
Any? Move to the next item, then? Any agreements are done. Budget, budget committee member selection process.
Here we go. We're off and running. The only change we've made to this process for you new board members, we're starting a little later. We used to start this process in August, and I don't think we got anybody's attention in August, and we would have to republish and keep it open and leave it open. So the one thing new with it, we're trying, is we're starting now. What, what you have, and this is for future action, so the process you have in front of you, we have two openings. We have Chair Garg's Zone Four position open for Budget Committee, and Dr. Carpenter in Zone Seven, your position is open this year as well. We propose that applications would be accepted beginning November 5th through January 19th. That would coincide with the day after the board meeting that you would take action to say, yes, this, this is the right process. We'd publicize them using the district normal communication channels. Candidates will submit a letter of interest resume through an online application form. And unique to Beaverton, the board member from each zone with an open position will review those applications that are submitted for the zone and recommend a candidate for those positions. And that we would bring those by February 3rd to a meeting for you to approve, to get those Budget Committee members in place so that by that kind of, I don't know, it was first or second Tuesday in March, when we do Budget 101, they'll be here, they'll be on board and ready to go. So that's the process we recommend. If you have questions, I'm happy to take those now, or we can talk later, but we'd, we'd like to get this approved at your next meeting.
Dr. Carpenter?
Thank you. Should we, are we responsible for reaching out to the current or the outgoing Budget Committee member to, you know, assess if they're reapplying, or they just get this? Tell me what that looks like.
We, we can, we can handle it however you like. I've seen it done differently, and there's nothing that precludes a member that's been serving from serving again. And if you'd like us in the business office to reach out to those two members and say, do you have an interest and it's open? We can do that. Or you could reach out directly and say, hey, what are you thinking? Where do you want to go? I, I'm open to either, and, and I'm, I'm perfectly happy in reaching out to those folks and saying, express your interest, and here's the process.
I, I would love to reach out to Dr. Schultz, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
So next item, I think you, you don't have to leave your space. It's Declaration of Surplus Property.
I'm, I'm going to bring my friends.
Okay.
Good evening again. Here with Steve Sparks to talk about District Surplus Property. As part of the 2022 Bond Program, one of the goals was to establish perimeter fencing at all of our elementary schools. Once we start to do that, we've seen this from time to time, that at some of our schools, some of our neighbors have started to encroach a little bit onto our property. And when that happens, we try to come to a, a process that would not negatively impact the neighbor and not negatively impact the district. Tonight, we're going to go through a few slides on a specific set of neighbors at Fergrove Elementary. I'm going to turn it over to Steve to give some of the details for you to consider.
So for the record, Stephen Sparks, I'm the Executive Administrator for Long Range Planning. And as Casey noted, we do have a situation where we have private encroachments on Fergrove Elementary School that's circled up on the aerial there. And so what we've done is part of the security upgrades with perimeter fencing is we're actually doing property line surveys, and that's how we're discovering these encroachments. So you can see here, our area of encroachment is just a jumble of fence lines. And what we did when we reached out to them was saying, look, we're building this fence, we're going to go along the property line. The neighbors were, you know, chagrined to hear that and wanted to consider other options. So we went, we did an appraisal, we're, you know, we've hired a land use consultant to process surveys with City of Beaverton and Washington County. We came up with a price, and we've offered this in other instances where we found encroachments. And this is the only group that wanted to proceed with, hey, we would like to acquire this property from you, and part of that step is coming to you, looking for a surplus property declaration. One of the things that we wanted to make clear with these folks is we, it had to be a unanimous decision to proceed because we didn't want a zigzag, you know, a saw blade, you know, type of property line. It'd be, make maintenance very challenging. So what we've come up here, and you can see in this, in the colored slide in the aerial above it, as straight of a line as we could do, we're, you know, paying attention to where the existing improvements are, where trees are, things of that nature. So we have an area of square feet here for each property and a total amount that we would like to come back to you for a surplus declaration. I would like to make sure you understand that if we do proceed with this, the neighbors will be buying the property from us. We're not giving this away. So here are our next steps. We'd like to come to you in November if you agree to do a surplus declaration. We will then go through the land use process with the City of Beaverton, which will ultimately require a replat of our property and the neighbors' property, which would then require a new plat to be recorded at Washington County. This does not happen quickly. It will take time, but it's, you know, pretty standard in terms of that time that will be required. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Will the district, so we're going to be receiving money from them. Will the district incur any, incur any expense associated with this? Are we paying, or are they paying the fees for Washington County for the replating? Or are we paying equal share, you know?
We're paying an equal share. We have, part of their cost is the consultant fee. We've decided that we pay for the land use fees and the, you know, recollection fees and things like that, but comparatively speaking, that's not a big number.
Okay. And it's sort of a fair market value type amount of money we're getting for these square feet?
Yes, we did an appraisal for the area that's been encroached upon, and that's what we're going with.
Thank you.
Dr. Perez? What if any negative impact would be on students if they don't have that piece of property? Like, it looks like they've already built their fence, so the students don't even have access to that area anyway. But what if any negative impacts would it be to the school? I, I, it looks like it's near the parking lot.
So for the, I don't know if I've got a laser on this, but if you look at this aerial at the edge of the parking lot on the east side, there is a fence and gate in there. We have, we used to have a portable in that area. It's now a pre-K playground, which is also fenced. So in terms of the area that the, the school might use, we have, this is one of our larger elementary school sites, and we have plenty of room to grow out on that site should we ever decide to reinvest and remodel, rebuild that, that facility.
Thanks. Director Carson?
Thank you. Just building on that question, is, is this like residential? Is this just all for residential use? That's?
It is all residential, yes. It's basically the backyards. You know, the backyard for that subdivision in that zone is 15 feet. And what happened over time is, as people replaced fences, it just kind of kept growing a little bit.
Thank you.
If you were to go down the power line trail, walk the power lines and look to the sides, that's kind of what we have over the district.
Dr. Potter?
Mine isn't a question, it's a, an appreciation for the team because when you start talking to people about their property lines, it can become very prickly very quickly. And so the fact that the team was able to be a good neighbor in this work and not have it be filled with animosity and discontent is actually a really big compliment to the team as you're navigating these super complex building and permitting and all of these pieces and the really beautiful garden boxes that somebody built off of their property. So thank you for helping us be good neighbors for the folks who border our properties.
Dr. Perez?
Just, I, I come from a place where, like, I could never imagine just making my fence go into somebody else's yard and then just continuing to build. Like, that just doesn't make any sense to me. But it actually brings up a concern for me, like, how many other properties do we have, like, along our, I mean, we almost have all our fences up now, so that's helpful, but it just, I was like, oh, my.
So through the fencing project, we have found approximately a dozen examples of this. And each one of those was resolved by, you know, the improvement being removed and the fence being installed. There are also examples where the district would have a playground and then a slope down to the property line, so they would put the fence, you know, 15, 20 feet away from the property line because they didn't want students going down into an area where it's out of sight. And neighbors just assumed, oh, hey, this is my rear yard. So every time we're doing a project where we do a property line survey, we're finding some examples, not every, and, you know, like, our newer, newer buildings, I'd say in the past 25 years, we had a property line survey done pretty much at the same time as the residential development went on. we had a property line survey done pretty much at the same time as the residential development went on. We're, we're solid. It's the older schools where we're finding these kinds of things.
Just think about like, um. That's a good question, but I just think about like the whatever process we use to make this decision, what's our system for the next time we have to make this decision? It sounds like you have a process that you followed and talked to each one, and everybody has to agree that. So I'm just thinking process-wise, if this were to happen again, while we're building a fence, like, I'd want us to be thinking about our process so that it's an equitable process, like, if people will be getting property from us.
Right. The, the process we have been using is before we do any fencing projects, before we do any surveying, we send a letter to all adjoining property owners to let them know that you're going to see people out along your fence line or your property line, because there are some places where they just don't have fences. And people will get alarmed because there are people out there in vests and, you know, using survey equipment. We let them know what's going on. And then, once we find out if there are encroachments, we immediately reach out to those people and we do a meeting with those folks. We don't do a, an email saying, hey, move your fence. It's, let's get together and talk about this and then review their options.
And you don't have to explain the whole, I was just saying, whatever process we use here, it'd be great to write it down and then we're using it every time. So like, so that it becomes something that people know if something would happen.
Right. I, I just would want to emphasize the uniqueness of this decision. It's always been, until this point, people will say, I don't agree, but I'll move my fence.
Thank you. Okay, we can move to the next agenda item, board policy revisions.
All right, so here we are to talk again about board policy revisions. Now, this is the policy revisions proposed for future consideration for approval. And you have information in your packet about what the proposed policy revisions are. One is to board policy AC, non-discrimination. OSBA recommends adjustments to this policy to add language about civil rights-related complaints and, and the civil rights coordinator. That is a change that was made in state law around being required to have a designated civil rights coordinator was made a couple of years ago. And OSBA is now recommending some additional language in this policy. The second is a little bit different from the way board normally is looking at policy revisions where it's laid out with the blue text showing what would be new and the red text showing what would be changed. We have been looking at our policy manual, and as the board will recall, over the past many board meetings, you've considered board policies for revisions, many of which have been just one or two at a time. We're, we're working through our board policy manual to update our pronoun language and at the same time, might make any clerical corrections to scrivener's errors that we might find. So for example, the word maybe "and" instead of "and" is missing a letter, an obvious error, a comma in the wrong place. There's another, probably 30 or more policies that need these updates to pronouns. And we can continue to bring them to the board, one and, one at a time or two at a time over board meetings over the next perhaps one and a half or two years. But it's also suggested that perhaps this could be done simply in one pell swoop. There is no proposal to change the content and meaning of any policies. But one way to move forward would be for the board to simply approve the district to make these clerical updates and correct scrivener's errors where there is obviously no change in, in the meaning or substance of the policy. And then staff would complete that work and not be bringing those policies one or two at a time over the next year and a half or two years. The board would still be considering policy revisions over that time, but those are policy changes of substance where it is required or recommended due to changes in state law or considered best practice.
And we can also let the board be aware of what changes happen, even those scrupulous errors in a Friday memo or weekly memo.
Yes, absolutely. So, thank you. There's a partial list, pulled about 20 examples of these policies here. But that is, we would go through, if the board approved moving forward in, forward in this way, we would go through, we would make those changes and convey that to the board, what exactly was changed.
Dr. Carpenter.
Has this always been a tool available to us, or did something change that we're like, we just are like, let's just do it all at once? But it's always been available?
Yes, there's, there's no policy change or law change that allows this. This is, we have been bringing them forward one or two at a time, and it was considered, maybe we could just move forward in one grouping.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have comments by the board members. And the students. Let's, let's do the board member because this is their first time. And then we'll give the students a chance to give some closing comments so that they can have a. No, this time, let's the board members do it, and we'll start with Director Raji.
I mean, I guess, I don't have any active comments. We discussed book month. I mean, I guess I'll share briefly, most recent book I finished was Sky Full of Elephants, Elephants by Sebo Campbell. Yeah, I would advise people read it. It's a good book.
Okay, next up, Direct, Dr. Potter.
Sure. Because last time it was Dr. Perez.
I'm, I'm gonna go along with, is it National Book?
National Book Month, yeah.
National Book Month, so we were asked to share. So I try to do a fiction and a nonfiction, and I read my fiction old-school paper. So Lisa Sees the Island of Sea Women. It's a fabulous read. You can see from my bookmark, I'm almost in. And then I always have to listen to nonfiction. And so that's a commentary on my own self, not on anything. And I'm listening to The Serviceberry by Robin Wallkemmer. I don't know if I said that right, but fabulous reads. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Kasim.
Thank you. I think again, the start by the book, I have, it's a bit expansive in terms of topic and the depth, but I, I'm currently reading The Empire of AI by Karen Howe. That is timely and relevant, especially where everyone hears the words "AI" around us. So look into it in terms of where and how and how it's being built, so, relevant. If it's okay, I, I just had a few more comments. I just wanted to start by thanking the staff for, you know, putting everything together with the work session today. And obviously also thank my fellow board members and everyone here for slogging through a really, really, really long evening. Special shout out and thank you to Carrie and Sarah and everyone who helped kinda put together the agenda, all of everything for the work session and helping execute it. Also a huge shout out and thank you to board leadership, as well as the search subcommittee for sort of, again, organizing things and helping kinda situate it. Shout out to our consultants, the human capital team for showing up, getting, you know, again, getting through some of the granularity and creating space for us to, to really, you know, work through it. I also wanna welcome and thank our student representatives for being here. It's really exciting. Like I said earlier, I, I love to see the table grow and have more voices, especially student voices. As one of our esteemed directors mentioned earlier, it's the students that have the authentic experience. So it adds significant value to the discourse and the conversation. I hope, as much as there may have been some dry parts, there were some exciting sparks that you found within the, within the nature of the discourse and the conversation that we had across the board and on so many significant topics. And don't worry, it will get easier and palatable and things will start making sense. And some words will start resonating that when we are saying this, we're in fact talking about it. So bit by bit, it'll happen. And I speak from experience, having been here a whole of, what, three months? So, you know, I have got it all down. Yeah, and I also wanted to thank all the testimony, again, people who showed up and said things, people who sent in written commentary. I always wanna make sure I at least make space to acknowledge that and recognize that we, we hear and we see you. Wanna thank our union leaders for their words and, again, for their encouragement and their callouts and sort of, again, bringing along and cultivating the, the type of awareness that's necessary and needed, especially in these times, to hold each other and community together and keep each other safe. I also wanted to acknowledge that in these somewhat divisive times where there is heightened polarization, we really need to prioritize safety across the district, in our schools, on our board, in our conversations, in the discourse that we have, especially when we know that as elected members or leaders, we are sometimes targeted by either hate or threats. And we must do what we can to reject that narrative and do what we can to create a sense of safety for everyone and make sure that we are, again, modeling a, a pattern where we are accepting and embracing the diversity of thought and voices that we are so fortunate to have in our board, in our boardroom and in our community. So really wanted to acknowledge that, really wanted to prioritize that, really wanted to ground and center ourselves in that because safety begins with each one of us, and we must do more in today's time and climate to hold each other close. Thank you.
I had planned to talk about one of my favorite books that I'm rereading right now, Democracy in Chains by Nancy McLean. I had also planned on talking about the No Kings Rally planned for this weekend, where people can go and should go, use their voice to protest against fascism. But instead, I'm still processing emotions from tonight's testimony. And maybe, you, you all don't know this, but I've been called on by students, Palestinians, Arabs, Muslims, and folks in our Jewish community to use my power and privilege to speak about what has been happening for the past two years. And while I do continue to fear for my own safety in this position, and frankly, I'm a little surprised those comments about me were allowed tonight. I wanna keep the focus on what is important. Our motto is belong, believe and achieve. And that's not for me, that's not for us up here, it's for our students. Our students include Palestinian students. I know at least five families who have lost over 500 family members combined. This is a genocide. Many of you know that, know that. And our silence as a board speaks volumes to our families. Have you heard from Palestinian families? What are we doing to build, belong, believe and achieve for community members whose family members are dying? And let me be clear, acknowledging Palestinian students and lives is not anti-Semitic. Naming the government that is killing family members of our students is also not anti-Semitic. And as a Jewish friend once told me, not speaking up to injustice creates more divide and hatred. I welcome school board members and school leadership to engage in these hard conversations about Israel and Palestine in ways that we can make our students, all of our students, belong, believe, achieve. Thank you.
If you guys would like to say some closing comments, anything, your experience, whatever you wanna talk about, it's up to you guys.
Sure, I'll be the first student to speak. Yeah, but I found that sitting up here was really eye-opening to have people come up and want to share their voice and have, and just have that outlet. And I think that it, in this, at this time in history, that that's really important, that we still have that ability. And to continue on the book train, I really gotta honor my AP Calculus textbook that I will be returning to, 'cause it's never gonna let me down. I might let it down, but it won't let me down.
I would like to say thank you to you for going first as a student. Yeah, today really was, was eye-opening, like you said. And I learned a lot, and I know I'll learn a lot more in future board meetings. And I, I think it speaks volumes to how many people will come here to dedicate their time and volunteer their time because of, because it shows they care. Moving on with the book thing, I'm actually in the middle of transitioning between books, so maybe I'll listen to some of the suggestions that people made here. But yeah, that's it.
There we go. Oh, okay. I also wanna thank Isabel for going first as a student, 'cause I know that was hard. Anyways, I also agree that today was very eye-opening 'cause, especially during public comment, it was all of the different perspectives that were presented definitely had a, like, impact. Like, I definitely felt things during that, 'cause it was just hard in some ways to listen to some of those things and knowing that that kind of stuff has been going on. But overall, I think I had a very amazing time tonight, and I'm very glad that I am here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, for me, it was an experience. It was like a really unique experience sitting here today and witnessing all the discussions, 'cause it was like a wide range of discussion. We had public speaking, we had school updates. And then we moved right to budgeting and financing, so that was cool.
Thank you. First, I just really want to echo all the great pullness that we have shared for the staff and all the testimonial. I also make sure that I read all the recent testimonial as well. So thank you for your time in sharing your, what you really deeply care for. I also want to congratulate, again, Nikki Throer for winning the Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators, big educator award, because these really matter, that they have representative, that we, students of color have representation of a educator of color who are actually receiving, you know, state award and national award. I also would like to also congratulate Jason Galbraith for, gosh, I think I can't hear his last name, for winning the science teaching, for being named as national teacher award and how he talked about his teaching philosophy and what he believes in when he teaches. And also that he, when he said that, I'm gonna throw out all the things that didn't work and try to, you know, add things that's gonna work because our students have changed. And I'm like, what do you mean by he's teaching 10 classes in one period? Then I'm like, oh, maybe it's just because they have 10 different level in one classroom. But that's hard. So I want to congratulate two of our staff and also Beaverton for having such great teachers. Also, again, thank you BF Christie for sharing the appreciation for our staff who actually are the clue to holding us all together without our classified staff. I don't think we can do what we do. And BA for representing the teachers, all the hard work and all the teachers out there who are in front of our kids every day. And thank you so much for sharing and continue to support our teachers and also letting us know what we need to do better. I, also, oh, the book.
You're asleep in the back.
Okay, just having a bit of a moment. Okay. No, I forgot. What was I talking about? Oh, the book. So actually, I'm reading, this is really boring. And not boring, but boring because I'm going to share with you, I'm reading The Hundred and Seven Days from Kamala Harris because I'm always empowered and learning from women of color who actually are out there and fighting a good fight and being courageous and, you know, be pioneer of things that, that for centuries, for ever since the United States has been in place. I'm getting emotional. So I just want to learn and I continue reading books. And I also love, as I shared earlier, I also love Becoming, Become, Becoming from Michelle Obama. Thank you.
I participate in the Accountability Committee, and so we met last, since our last meeting. And it was great to see from our staff, just, we're on time, on budget, and the work that the Accountability, Bond Accountability Committee has done as well as our staff. So I just want to thank folks for that. Looking forward to seeing next steps with our long-range facility planning. I don't sit on that, but just looking forward to that. And I wanted to thank our staff for all the trainings that they've done around what to do if ICE were to come into our buildings. That connects to one of my books. This is one that I read, it's called Afterlife by Julia Alvarez. And it talks about, like, immigration and women coming together to support each other. It's, I dug into it and it was a quick read for me just because it was in, I got really into it. And then another book I'm reading is called A Rise, The Art of Transformational Coaching. And I just took this teaching, I took this class for work kind of to learn about coaching and transformational coaching. And it was really cool to learn that Elena Aguilar is actually somebody that we're working with here in our district. And there were 35 different staff members from Beaverton in my training. And it was really cool to engage with them in learning together and then to learn that this is something, like, long-term for us to figure out how to best support our students. And the skills I learned were like, oh, this is actually really good. So I was excited to learn with Beaverton teachers and that we're doing this work together for our students. So thank you. And one last thing, thanks to our students. And I'm looking forward to hearing your voice. And if there's anything we can do in our meeting to help think about questions that you might have and being able to answer or have your voice in the conversations, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. There are pros and cons of going first and last, so. Since, but I would, I can't finish it without saying thank you to the students for being here, for giving your time when you're doing calculus and a lot of others heavy books you're carrying. And so thank you for your perspective and your time. I would also like to say thank you to BF for doing a wonderful work and our subcommittee members who are present and bringing all the information from them. So their Feed My Body, Feed My Brain is a very good initiative. So if you can help and spread the word, please do. Last month, I was, I attended the Audit Committee with Director Kasim. With audits, the good news is, no news is good news. So no exceptions. We are doing great. Our accounting team is excellent. They haven't found anything, any red flags, or... So that's a great thing to report back for a district of this size because you guys are really doing a good job. And freedom of speech is a very, very interesting thing when you really think about it. We want that for us, and we should want that for others, too. So when people come and say things and share with us about their insecurities, we need to listen. And having a compassionate heart and having an opinion about things that are going on in the world is important, but we also need to listen. And that's all I'm going to say about that. And so in recognition of the National Book Month, the book that I am reading is Find a Way by Diana Nyad, who swam from Cuba to Florida at the age of 64. And that was, that's an interesting book. We all have dreams, different dreams. But perseverance and sticking to our goals, you know, make it happen. So that's, that's what I would like to share. And Libby is a very good app that you can get from the library. That's how I am reading it. I didn't have to go and buy the book. I could just download it, you can listen to it, you can read it. And so I hope all the students out there who are listening will read more than, just for fun, too. So with that, I would like to say thank you and good night and hand it over to our superintendent for the closing comments.
Good night.